The nine AM session of Roanoke City Council for June the fifth, twenty twenty-three is hereby called order and I'll ask Clerk Miss Susan McCord, please call the row.
Mr. Volleson.
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Here.
Mr. Pretty.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Here.
Ms. White Boyd.
Here.
And Mayor Lee.
Here, and I call him as president. All right, council meetings will be televised live and replayed on RBTV, Channel Three, on Thursdays at seven o'clock PM and Saturdays from ten AM to five o'clock PM, and video streamed through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanokeva. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the deaf or hard of hearing. All right, welcome everybody, and we have some items for action that we need to approve. A communication from the mayor's office requesting that council convene in a closed meeting to discuss vacancies on certain authorities, boards, and commissions and committees appointed by council pursuant to Section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven, Code of Virginia nineteen fifty as amended. A list of current vacancies is included with the agenda that you have, council members. All right, I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Mr. Volleson.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones. Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the motion passes. There's a communication from the city manager requesting a closed meeting to discuss a prospective business or industry or the expansion of an existing business or industry at the eight hundredth block of Stewart Avenue Southeast, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven, Code of Virginia as amended. I need a motion.
So moved. Second.
Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Mr. Volleson.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones. Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the motion passes. There's a communication from the city attorney requesting that city council convene a closed meeting to consult with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, and to discuss the disposition of publicly owned property located at twenty-four twenty-four Bramington Avenue Southwest, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to two point two dash thirty-seven eleven, Code of Virginia as amended. I need a motion.
So moved.
Seconded.
All right, Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Mr. Volleson.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones. Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the motion passes. Thank you. All right, items listed on the two PM council do require any discussion or clarification or addition deletions to the two PM agenda, are there any? All right, there are no topics for discussion by the mayor and other members of council, so we will go right on into our briefings, and I'm pleased to recognize our city manager to introduce the briefing.
Thank you, Mayor and council, we have three briefings this afternoon, and we should be able to go in this order, I think, so we're going to start with the annual report from Roanoke Fire EMS, and just as a reminder, we try annually to do a annual report, obviously, from both fire and police. Over the last few years, we've separated those out, so we do one at each meeting, and so at your next meeting, we anticipate Chief Roman providing the annual report for police at that, at that time, so we'll have Chief Hobak come up and walk you through this, and then after Chief Hobak, we'll have a presentation from the Roanoke Prevention Alliance, and then we'll conclude with a discussion of the Gun Violence Prevention Framework and Star City Safe. Thank you.
Good morning, Chief.
Good morning, Mayor. Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Cobb, members of council, City Manager Cal, thank you so much for allowing me to stand before you to talk about our performance for the Roanoke Fire EMS for twenty-twenty, twenty-two year. In the audience with me, I have about six people, and we'll start from your right as Deputy Chief Stone, Battalion Chief Trevor Shannon, Rachel Hale, who was our Community Risk Reduction Specialist in our PIO, we got Rebecca Smith, who's our Fire Marshal, and we have Andy Foley, who was our Battalion Chief over EMS Health and Safety. I will tell you that this year for the, for Roanoke Fire EMS has been a very busy year, but before I get started, I kind of want to do a shout out. As you know, we had the Iron Man this weekend, and it was a very busy time, and the shout out goes for two people. First of all, for Trevor Shannon in the audience, who facilitated all the coverage associated with that, Bodatot Roanoke County, all the law enforcement had, the EOC set up the nine-one-one center facilitating communications and the services and tracking everybody and when they started, when they end, so that they can keep everybody safe and make sure that event went off very well, and we did. We had very few incidences where we actually had to transport people, and it was all minor stuff, but he did a fantastic job, so thank you, Trevor, for doing that.
Well, stand up, Trevor, let me review.
And of course, it doesn't go along, it, he doesn't do it alone, but the whole team kind of came together and facilitated everything, including Andy Foley controlling and, not controlling, but facilitating the EMS coverage for the event as well. The other shout out is to one of our captains who actually did the Iron Man, and his name is Captain Todd Riley, and in conversation prior to doing the Iron Man Marathon, he said that he really wanted to get it under six hours. He came in five hours, fifty-nine minutes, fifty-eight seconds. So I will tell you, I'm very, I'm very pleased, I talked to him yesterday, he was just ecstatic. One thing he did say, he could have shaved off about forty-five seconds and gotten a little night in his comfort, he got his comfort level, if he hadn't stopped to heckle the Swift Water team, it's, it's, out of Carver's Cove, a team which he's on, he stopped to talk to them for a few minutes while he was swimming. So he actually, you know, he could have been at about forty-five seconds sooner, but he did a phenomenal job, a tremendous leader in the organization, and also, you know, part of our community that is, you know, very representative, so hats off to him for finishing the Iron Man. And getting started as it relates to our year end for twenty twenty-two, I will tell you, just kind of brief, tell you what, you know, we do and make sure that you, you understand that the resources that we do have. Roanoke Fire EMS operates out of eleven stations, from that, we operate ten engine companies, four ladder trucks, we have nine full-time ambulances, we have three peak demand ambulances, which they come on at eight o'clock in the morning and go off at eight at night, and they kind of pick up that surge of volume we have during the day. We have two advanced care paramedic units that are doing advanced care as it relates to medications and advanced protocols when we have more, a higher acuity patients, so they're there on those calls, and then we have two battalion chiefs to kind of run both battalions, one north, one south, that make sure the staffing's right, make sure they are in control of any large events and take command. We have specialty teams hazmat, swift water rescue, and the heavy and tactical rescue team, which are regional, so we have regional partners with Roanoke County, City of Salem, Franklin, and so they help us out with those regional responses. Community engagement events, this year's been very active, we started coming out of COVID, we really have started getting more and more active in the community, some of the things that we've done every year is guns and hoses, but I will tell you, Wednesday's going to be kind of special for me because this year we had a sweep between the hockey game and the, and the softball game, the hoses won both, and Wednesday, I will be able to, for the last time, the last time, present our police chief will be moving up to Assistant City Manager with a softball representative of the guns win, so we'll give him a hard time in the director's meeting for that. National Night Out, Rita Cross America, nine-eleven Stairclimb, if you're interested, the registration's open for that, the art contest with the schools, the first picture I have show the school, we had a tremendous turnout for our schools, and with the art contest, many engaged young folks did a phenomenal job, and to, to score and to award was very difficult for us because they were so phenomenal artwork, such phenomenal artwork. Community risk reduction, we do, we still have the smoke detector program, we started the AED program in public access in the parks a couple of years ago, we continue that this year. Community CPR program, compression shock, we partnered with Jack Perkins and his group. This weekend, actually, we had three sessions set up, one at the Melrose Library, which, when I left there, the room was packed, and then I went from there to First Baptist, I think, who had the Latino CPR compression shock, and I understand that was very well attended, when I got there, all the kids were outside looking at the fire truck, but, you know, they got, they got their priorities together, but that went well, and then we had one downtown at the library downtown, and I will tell you, they had thirty-five people registered for the first event, they had over fifty people show up, so we had our people there helping with the compression shock, great community involvement, and CPR is the number one IQ can do if somebody's in cardiac arrest, and, and we had a lot of people come out for that. We had the virtual, we do virtual and in-person public education, community walks, and support other community events, and we had like six community events going on Saturday. Demand for service, this year has been our busiest year for demand for service, I will tell you, in the history, I've been with the city thirty-eight years, and every year it kind of crops up as it relates to man. Fire service response is up almost two and a half, twelve and a half percent, a little over twelve and a half percent. EMS demand was up about four point seven nine percent in growth, so with that, you know, that's just a kind of a busy, a busy time for us this year. I will tell you, from an EMS perspective, this year, we're actually trending down a little bit, about four percent, so, you know, that goes up and down, for the most part, last year was a very busy year. Our performance for structure fires, and just to kind of refresh you, we have two performance indicators we do for accreditation on structure fires. First is roll out the door to front of the house, we want to be there in four minutes' travel time, and then we want to get the entire workforce, which is the first alarm assignment of three engines and two ladders, there in ten minutes or less. So last year, we made that, the first arriving in ninety-four point ten percent, ninety-four point one percent, and then our effective response force, we dropped down a little bit at eighty-nine point seven percent. I will tell you, we only missed about thirty or forty seconds on most of those calls, and they were all the ladders coming from a farther distance away. I'm not too concerned about that dip, but we did have this year, we had seven, two alarm fires, and one third alarm fire, which is some of the reasons why we didn't meet our goal. Significant fires, we were at sixty, sixty-eight this year, which is about normal for us as it relates to the number of significant fires we have. The fire you see there is the cotton mill fire where we had the roof catch fire. At that same time, we also had another second alarm fire going on Roar, I believe, when that one hit. Calls for fires, and this is what the Fire Marshal does, and I will tell you, we have no fires that are still under investigation. Right now, our Fire Marshal's closed out everything, and from the perspective of incendiary arson fires, we only had sixteen, which is a decline, we'll show you that in a few minutes. Undetermined, which was twenty-six, and accidental, which is twenty-nine. Undetermined really means if there's so much damage to the house or the structure, we just really can't determine whether it was accidental, or it was intentional, or it was electrical in nature or something like that, it's just too much damage for us to really determine what the cause was. Arson fires, again, five-year low at sixteen, very proud of that. We have a very active Fire Marshal's Office that really gets out, and we do have situations they investigate, they start the mitigation efforts, they talk to the people, if we have a suspect, we will interview them and take care of the situation, so I'm very proud of that. Fire loss history, this year, our fire loss was six million, six point three million. That is pretty high, but I will tell you a couple of things driving that, we had two events that the losses, not to the building, but the machinery inside the building were over a million dollars. One down in Blue Hills, and then one with Corillian out at their laundry, that drove it, plus we had inflationary costs that are associated with driving some of that increase. I'm not too worried about that, but it, it is what it is right now as it relates to what our, what our loss was. Fire Marshal's Office activity for the year, four thousand seven hundred ninety-nine events, new inspections, re-inspections, investigation permit, that include their, their investigation and cause and origin situation, so that's a whole different thing. This is just them meeting with the businesses, working with the community, making sure that they have questions, we answer those questions, and then if they are in, out doing a new investigation inspections, and they have a situation, they work with the community, work with the business owner to get it corrected. From an EMS perspective, we have three levels as well. Our EMS is on a critical perspective, and those are the people in cardiac arrest, delivering babies, critical traumas, we want to get there in five minutes or less, ninety percent of the time, and that is from the out the door to in front of the house or in front of the patient. We dropped down this year, and it's really due to the volume we had of eighty-seven point five percent, so we expect, if we make some modifications, to make that get up a little bit, and I don't think we're going to have any problems with that. From an ALS perspective, we're staying right at the ninetieth percentile, those are the people having chest pain, difficulty breathing, that need immediate intervention, but not necessarily critically life-threatening, either trauma or medical event. From a BLS perspective, last year, when I, when I talked to you, we were kind of bringing on our BLS units, and right now, we have two BLS units twenty-four seven, and we have seven ALS units which are staffed with paramedics. Our BLS are just our EMTs, non-paramedic certified, and they will run the low-acuity calls, such as the people who have been sick for a couple of days, or a person who's fallen and maybe sprained their ankle or something like that, they will run those acuity calls, which are relatively low, and they can be handled at the EMT level. And then we have the paramedic units that are more acuity, but we're experimenting with that right now as far as the run volume, and it's working out well for us. We're actually going to add another BLS unit, not add, but replace one of our paramedic units with a BLS unit, so that we can make sure that we're doing the right thing by our customers, and based on our numbers and our trends and our analytical data, replacing another paramedic unit with a BLS unit, we can handle it pretty well because of our volume, the way it's situated, and so we're not too concerned about that ninety percentile. I think it's going to stay around ninety percent, maybe go up a little bit with this next change to ninety-two percent, we'll just have to wait and see. EMS by priority, our critical life threat, if we have a call comes in, with fifteen percent of our calls came in at a high acuity level, subject not breathing, subject doesn't have a pulse, subject is bleeding profusely, subject is, is having such respiratory difficulty they can't speak to you, that was fifteen percent of our calls. The ALS calls was forty-three percent, which is somebody just having chest pain, conscious alert, but needs to have some interventions, and then thirty-eight percent, where we talked about those non-acuities, were thirty-eight percent of those calls, and then we have four percent, which I expect that to grow, that are also BLS, but we run non-emergency too. We'll get a call, and this person's been like this for a couple of days, dispatchers are doing a great job of typing the calls, ambulances run non-emergency, they won't go out, lights and sirens, they'll get there when they get there, and it's working out well for us, not had any problems with that, and, but four percent, I do expect that to grow a little bit as we get farther into our emergency medical dispatching with our dispatchers, and we actually are in the process of transitioning that over to a computer-based system, which will give them a better tool for which they can type the calls. EMS demand, and this is kind of a graph showing since two thousand and seven to where we are in two thousand and twenty-two, a continued increase, I will tell you, this increase has really been without any significant shift in population within the city of Roanoke, so it is within, it's not, it's not a growth associated with population. EMS demand by volume by month, and as you can see, at the end of the year, we were at four point seven nine percent, and you can see as we came out of COVID twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, where our growth, growth was, and we continue to grow throughout the summer and towards the end of the year, we started to decline just a little bit, with exception of November being eight percent growth. Volume by trends by, by the area of the city, you know, these are not, I'm not surprised by this, to be honest with you, but Old Southwest and downtown, fifteen, almost sixteen percent, Upper End of Williamson Road, fifteen percent, Southeast, twenty percent, and then the other one down in the Orange Avenue four sixty area, it was a ten percent growth. Again, we've got some nursing home growth down there, and we have some, some other things going on there that's driving some of that. Demand for services, we talked about our peak demand units come on at eight o'clock, go off at eight o'clock, this is demand surge as it climbs, and that's why we do our peak demand, as opposed to paying a twenty-four hour truck to be there, it's more efficient for us to do a twelve-hour truck, just to pick up and capture that surge of workforce coming in, people getting up, people having, as more people, the more people get active, the more calls we have, so it really is kind of, this, this curve really shows what that's all about. EMS transports, we transported about sixteen thousand four hundred calls, transports last year, our acuity level actually has dropped a little bit, we were at thirty-nine percent last year, we're down to thirty-five percent. The Level Three, which is urgent, needs ER attention, actually went up, and then so did our level of non-urgency, that actually went up, where they didn't really need to call us, they could have been, had that medical situation taken care of by another means, either going to the private doctor, going to a standalone medical center or something like that. Overall admission rate from what we transport is up at forty percent, forty point six percent, so a, as you can see, we, we look at everything kind of holistically of what we do, and then we use that information to kind of benchmark what our needs are and what our asks are. Transports by time of day, it's really no, it's the same as it relates to our calls by time of day, it's not unusual, I don't see anything different there. Factors impacting EMS demand is really unchanged from the last couple of years, you know, community health, senior living, nursing home facilities are really driving some of that, opiate crisis and mental health still very much active within our community. Limited private services, we actually had one of our private services pull out of Roanoke, which has helped offset some of our volume to the nursing homes. EMS uses a gateway to healthcare and then misuse of service, and, you know, we do have people that, you know, call us frequently and don't really need us, so we're still trying to work through those issues. Department priorities, and this is within our business plan, and I will tell you, I'm very grateful for what our budget is for this year. Fiscal resources, Station Two, we bought the land over on Williamson Road and, and are ready to start the A and E work for Station Two, excited about that project, and in Ju, in July, we'll start that program. A ladder, an ambulance, and a hazmat vehicle will be on order after the first of the fiscal year, it does take anywhere from about three to four years to get that in because the backlog is so horrendous, like ambulances right now are three-year delivery, and it's all about the chassis, it's not anything else, it's just the backlog of being able to get the equipment in, being able to build the truck, and being able to get it out of production, there's such a big backlog. Service equity, again, I'm very, I'm very humbled in the fact that you were able to support Medic fourteen down on Orange Avenue, as you can see, that growth continues at ten percent this year, that will allow us to increase or better meet our performance standards in that area. Recruitment and retention, operations right now, after recruit school graduated, we're still down six percent, we have twelve people in recruit school now, and we're going to have another regional school starting up in July, that will have seven or eight people in, we're not sure, and then we have another school scheduled for January to get a, get a, get a, another school going. We have, we're still operating in a negative staffing profile between our FMLA, our modified duty, and our vacancies, so it's not as bad as it was before this last recruit school, but we're still operating somewhat of a negative staffing profile, and we really got to do something to improve our diverse workforce. We've, during COVID, we lost a lot of our diversity because it really, job opportunities were pretty heavy, and they, and minorities, non-minorities alike were exiting to go take higher-paying jobs, and that's what happened during the COVID times. Professional development, again, paramedics, recruitment, retention, and training, we're critically low on paramedics, we really got to, and we've got, we probably got ten or twelve ready to come out, our test, we got some in class, but we've really got a plan for the future on this because over the next three years, we've really got to make sure that we have sustainable paramedic program going on. And then we got to start looking at our office development, we're getting ready to promote, and we'll, we'll send you a save the date, June fifteenth and June twenty-seventh is when we're doing promotions. Twenty-seventh will be here, the fifteenth will be in an off-site location because it's so big, the capacity for the council chambers can't handle it, so we have an off-site location for that, and you'll all get notified when that'll be, as soon as we nail down the location and get that taken care of. That will be the second biggest promotional process we've had since I've been chief, so we're very excited about those individuals taking all those new roles and those new responsibilities. So we got to make sure that we have that capacity for growth in the future as we go in the, as we go for the next five years. Again, a little about recruitment, retention, and diversity, recruitment, we really, in this last time, we had, I think we had one minority that passed and, and was successful in our recruit school, and we really need to do better at that, and that goes to our Equity Action Plan. I will tell you, this last time, and it's not the one that just graduated, but the one that will start in July, we inverted our hiring process, which was phenomenal for us to do, we weren't part of the county, we kind of inverted our hiring process, which means we interviewed people first, as opposed to letting them take the physical abilities test, let them take the written test, we got an applicant, applicant in, and that we knew the applicant, we interviewed him, we got him interested, we got him engaged, and hats off to Chief Stone for that project because we're there, we were very successful in getting a candidate pool, which we could fill. successful in getting a candidate pool which we could fill our next recruit school. And now we're in the process as part of Equity Action Plan of looking at our physical abilities test. Our physical abilities test, which was CPAT, took us, in order for us to start the hiring process to the time recruit school started, was almost six months. And that, we were losing people during that six months. We know that, we looked at our, our candidate pool to the ones that made applications, that actually interested in physical abilities, to the one that actually tested, and I could sit in front of them and offer them a job. We lost a lot of candidates. So we're in the process of changing that. And we, we hope to have that new process in place by August, that we won't have that eight weekly time that currently CPAT has, we can onboard people and doing things differently. So we've got to start thinking outside the box and doing things a little bit differently so that once we have a candidate, we capture their interest, we get them through the process, it's more efficient and it's a better way of doing business because we got to keep the good people that make application to the city of Roanoke. And that's one way of doing it. Retention, thank you all very much and our staff is very, very appreciative for historic compensation adjustment as it relates to, I think goes into effect June thirteenth. Implementation of phase three of the step plan. And then again, the diversity is part of our Equity Action Plan. Every month, I report out to the city manager about what we have going on, what we're doing. And we've got to think, this is not going to be an overnight fix for us. It really is not. This is a three to five year growth because I've got to have the diversity on, on the foundation in order to promote up to the officer level. This is going to be a three to five year growth for us. We're missing minority males, we're missing females, and that's something we really, we are now, we've been focused, we've really got to focus harder on and we're doing that. Plans for two thousand and twenty three, I will tell you that reaccreditation, we did go down and we've been reaccredited. That is our fifth accreditation since two thousand and two, I've been on all the teams. We went down to Florida and received it this year. They asked more questions than they ever asked before. I don't know why, but they did. We were able to answer all the questions. The recommendations they have are just housekeeping items for us, the nothing heavy lifts to get it done. So we're very excited about that. ISO came in and evaluated our organization. Unofficially, they've given us and retained the ISO one, but it has to go through the final approval process. We should hear something by July so that I can give you all the specifics that we are still an ISO one fire department. You know, we are a young department, so we're going to expand and keep going with our training associated with our younger department. Community risk reduction committee, we got a committee built up about fifteen folks that are really focused on what we are as an organization, what our community looks like, what our risks are within our community, then how can we do business better? And that community, and not only it was within our organization, they're partnering with Corillian, they're partnering with the, the other, or outreach organizations within our community because we know we have issues that we can probably be addressed through this partnership. So that community risk reduction committee is doing that. EMS two thousand and twenty was part before we went into COVID. We're still partnering with Corillian on our OMD program. Like I said, we're going to upgrade our CAD dispatch so that we have a computerized dispatch EMD program. We're expanding our toolbox, there's a lot going on with that and more to come. We're now doing field ultrasounds, which are really kind of cool as it relates to those acuity patients determine whether, you know, the heart is beating, the heart is not beating, how much fluid they have in their lungs, stuff like that. That's really helping out our diagnostics of what direction we go and the care we provide. And then again, we're expanding our BLS capabilities. Succession planning, we really got to focus on recruitment and hiring and, and a different way of doing business. This, this business, what we've done for the last twenty years is not working, doesn't work in this environment. We've got to think, we got to think differently and that's what we're doing. We got a good team put together to do that and this last round of what we did shows that we have success in doing that. And then the paramedic programs right now, VCU, Radford and Southwest Virginia programs are all up in operation, we have people in all those. Then we have to worry about officer development because all these young folks, over fifty or sixty percent of our folks are less than five years. So we've got to grow that officer development, that leadership, that ability for them to take the next role and the next step in their career for either lieutenant, first lieutenant or captain. With that, that is our, our performance or our year end report as it relates to the Fire EMS Department. I'll take any questions you may have.
Mr. Boleson.
I was noticing the, the change in demand in different areas and I saw southeast is twenty percent increase in demand. Is there something behind that or what could be causing such a big change or a big increase in that area?
Some of it has to do with the rescue mission and Lee Clark and I have had that conversation and, and it is, we've had a significant increase in calls for there. It really went down during COVID because their occupancy was, was way down. Those people didn't want to be at the rescue mission with, you know, everybody else. So that surge now they're back to full capacity and that's driving some of that. And there's other things driving that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Mine's partly a historical question. As it relates to the use of EMS as a gateway to accessing healthcare, when Medicaid was expanded in two thousand and eighteen, did you see that decrease?
No.
No, okay. I was concerned about that there are a number of people who might be removed from Medicaid in the upcoming year, I'm wondering whether or not you anticipated an increase in that area.
Yeah, I don't know that in our, in our analytics, it's really not related to what health insurance you have, it's just what access you have the quickest. In other words, they may not want to take initiative and go to the hospital or go to the doctor. Their philosophy is call nine one one, we'll take care of it. And that's the gateway into healthcare that they're using.
Thank you.
So it's really not associated with, you know, whether they have Medicare, Medicaid or even a private insurance.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks Chief for, for everything, you all are remarkable. I wanted to ask just a general question about health and wellbeing of the department. I think that with an increase in demands of service that there's, there's got to be some kind of toll that that takes professionally in terms of mental health, stress, how to respond to that. Can you talk a little bit about some of the things that you're seeing, but also some of the ways that as a department you offer support to the, the people that you work with?
Yes, and that's an excellent question. I mean, we have a very active peer support team that is through peers as well as professional counseling. We had a situation last Saturday, really horrific situation and the peer support team was on site within about an hour after that event. And it is a situation that they're very active. I don't know the activity because it's really a private situation. It's, it's something that we want them to get help, we want them to reach out, we want them to get the help they need without any fear of anything else. So we have a very active team and hats off to Dwayne Knoll and his team and his leadership on that. But we are very supportive of that and if it goes beyond that, we will support whatever it means or necessary. But as you look at the demand surge and what we're experiencing this year, which is our busiest year coming out, it has taken a toll because if you look at the number of calls we're running and then the acuity level that we're dealing with, with, you know, a couple of days ago, we had like five or six cardiac arrests in one day. And you know, that's, that's hard as you go in, you lose a family member, you have to talk to the family about the loss of that family member or the acuity level of that family member. And so we recognize and have recognized from year, even prior to COVID, the mental health of our firefighters are just as important as physical health and it is one and the same. And so we do have processes in place, we have teams in place that are recognized nationally that help and support our organization and the men and women that work for us so hard, day in and day out. So those teams are in place and help and it's been very successful, has been very successful. To my knowledge, we haven't lost anybody because of that situation, but it is not something that wouldn't be the possibility. But you know, they, they, they get on it very quickly. And our battalion chiefs, our advanced care paramedic, which are officers that deal with a lot of the critical situations, they'll call the team in very quickly if they have a bad situation and they don't hesitate to step up and ring it in.
Thank you, Chief.
Ms. Boleson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, I just want to say thank you for such a comprehensive report. You guys are doing an amazing job and, and your efforts on retention and the focus on compensation and diversity, I, I just appreciate the fact that you recognize those deficits and, and have put together a team to, to address them. Just a few years ago, we were talking about the, our aging population, you know, that's something I specialize in and you talked about maybe not deploying all of, all of your, all of the guys, you know, when they have a fall or something like that, maybe just doing a van. Have you seen an increase and, and is that working better just doing like a van to just pick up someone when they have a fall instead of deploying, you know, all of your guys?
We don't employ, when we have a person needs a lift and just to get back in bed or something like that, we'll send an engine company out. And the reason we do that is because the ambulances are so busy, engine company will go and, and help that, get that person back in bed or get the person in a chair. We're working now with the city manager's office about another level of that and that will be forthcoming. I'm very excited about that. I came out of the Community Risk Reduction Committee about giving alternatives to sending an engine or sending a medic unit or sending advanced care paramedic out on some of these calls that really don't need it. These are the people that may need, they come home from the hospital that have a change in quality of life, mobility issues. And when they get there, they know, don't know what to do. So this product, this program that we are looking at and mobilizing, hopefully in the near future, will address a lot of that in partnership with Corillian because it really is a need within our community. So I'm excited about that opportunity, but it, it, right now, we're not ready to, to say this is how it's going to work, but it is in the works to make that happen. You're right, it, it is a need within our community. And it may be that we go out and the person needs some help, but also needs a medication refill. We can help facilitate that, we can help them work with the family members, work with social services to get the resources they need. We've had situations where people just kept falling because they didn't have a bed to sleep on. And you know, we, we got them a bed and got them, got them up where they, when they get out of bed, they're not, they don't have that fall potential. You know, some of the things are just as simple as that, that people just don't know the resources out there that we can help with, this team will help with that.
Well, that's good to hear. I, I know that it's, I mean, the numbers are going to continue to increase with our aging population. It just, want to make sure, you know, that sending an engine might not be as cost effective as sending, you know, a mobile, another mobile unit of some sort. So I'm glad that you're working on something to, to address that. I was just concerned because I, I know we have a lot of falls in my business and, and they send the, the engine and I'm thinking, why did they send an engine? But I guess if that's what you have to do at this point.
Well, it's a staffing issue for us, the ambulances, you know, when they're constantly on the road dealing with the transports, the engine companies have less numbers per day and they run non-emergency, they're run out there and it's not the most efficient model, I agree with that. But it really is a way for us to, to keep fire protection going, meet the needs of our community and not ask for additional staffing. And that's kind of where we are to make sure that we're doing things best we can with the resources we have, being cost effective because every, every dollar we get comes from the taxpayers and we need to be mindful of that.
This program that you're, you're working on, that you really don't want to go into details about right now, do you know when we might hear something from you on that?
We're meeting with the city manager later on this month and then it'll be up to him to turn, when we relay that information out, but there's still some things we've got to come together to make that work. And you know, we're excited about that and we've already had some meetings, but we're now ready to, to see where we can go with that. But it is something that's not, it's not uncommon, Richmond's doing, Chesterfield's doing it, there's some other communities across the state that are doing it. We're just now at a level, it needs to be done.
Thank you, Chief, hold back, sounds like we're headed in the right direction.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Moon, ladies.
Thank you. Great presentation and I just have basic questions. On the community engagement that you were on, I love the community events that you listed. Under your community risk reduction, you have the community walks. How often are you out and when will be the next time?
I don't know when the next time, it's really driven by the Fire Marshal's office, are the ones to schedule those. We did about five or six last year and some this year where we actually went out and did community walks and asked them if they had active smoke detectors, did they need anything? We gave them fire prevention information. So I think we did three or four in the northwest, we did one in southeast or two in southeast, we did one in southwest. So we'll let you know when the next one's going on.
Okay, please. Okay, and under your demand for services, since I don't have anything, I didn't know if your thirty two thousand was an increase. And where you have under your fire, I was looking at your two thousand and twenty two numbers and I just wondered what was driving that number to increase it with your fires?
There's three things driving that. First one is, everybody knows Christmas was a very cold Christmas, right? Well, when you have a very, very, very cold Christmas, on the backside of that, fire departments get very, very busy because we have busted water lines, busted sprinkler heads, flooded basements. So about four or five days outside of the fall, we had engine companies running, dealing with sprinkler heads, dealing with busted water pipes, people coming home off vacation to find their whole basement flooded. I had a friend of mine that was gone and when they came back home and they had no idea, it almost totaled their house. And so we were busy for that. Second of all, that drove some of that is we did have some situations and windstorms that drove some wires down. But the heart of it probably is the outdoor fires that were created by the homeless population and we had to respond to quite a few of those. Now that's tearing down a little bit.
Was any of those fires from abandoned houses caused by?
No, it's campfires.
Oh, just camp, okay.
Yeah, we've had a couple of fires inside abandoned houses that, you know, we responded to, but the ones that drove some of this volume is really, you know, somebody sees the fire in the distance and they have a campfire going, maybe to cook or warm or something like that. But in the city of Roanoke, we have a no burn allowance, so the engine companies have to respond to that. We understand, they appreciate the need to keep warm and food, but then when they're starting a campfire behind an abandoned house or in a field or in a cave or wherever it may be, we have to respond to that. So that is some of those calls.
I think you mentioned the firefight causes. On the factors driving, excuse me, the factors driving EMS demand, you had the miss, miss, misuse of service. Has that trend changed at all and is there an increase? And where's the specific locations within the city you're finding most of your misuse of service?
Most of it's in the downtown area, I'll be honest with you. And we responded a couple, you know, over the weekend. It's just the transient population that come in that are misused. You know, I don't classify misuse of a person who doesn't understand their change in quality of life and what services are needed. Those are not the people we're classifying. The people we're classifying is people that call us and call us and call us because they want to ride to the hospital for the same thing that they refused treatment on just after they were there yesterday.
Right.
Okay, that's what I'm talking about, about misuse of service. Or they call us because Roanoke Memorial refused to treat them within about a couple hours and then they go outside and call nine one one, want to go to Lewis Gale. And we won't transport, we go back in, this is here, you're here to get it. And that's the misuse of service we're talking about. We certainly are not discouraging anybody from calling because we know there are people out there, they just don't know how their healthcare, how their health has changed in their quality of life. And we want to help with that and make sure we support that. But the people who are just normally calling is because it's more convenient and it's just an easy, easy out for them and that's what I'm talking about.
So are you putting anything else in place for that type of trend or for the homeless?
That will help with this program we're bringing up.
The one you're talking about for Arkansas or so?
Yes, ma'am. We have what's called a high utilizers program going on right now and we're in partnership with Corillian. So we know the people out there that are using our service tremendously. Some of them are very need, are very, need it very badly, but we got to find a better way to get them into healthcare as opposed to calling nine one one and going to the ER. And there's ways to do that. And then we have people that are just, you know, keep calling for whatever reason, but they don't need, they don't have any medical situation. And it may be a mental health issue, it may be just the fact that they just want to ride somewhere else. So this program will help better analyze that, we'll have dedicated staff to doing that. You know, Chief Foley is hitting that up right now, but as busy as he is running day to day operations for EMS, he doesn't have the capacity to do that, this team will.
Yeah. Do you have an increase or do you know, you may not know this one, or have information on data with regards to opioid overdoses, how many times you all have to respond?
I didn't bring that with me, we do in the, in the volume for opiate, of course, we were, and I shared this with the city manager, we were one of the second highest opiate overdoses in the Commonwealth, I think maybe in per capita. So I think, I think Vice Mayor Cobb spoke to me about that as well. So we are very, we still have a very active overdose population going on in Roanoke. To give you the idea of how many, it's really kind of skewed because some of the people we run, either deceased or in cardiac arrest, we can't tell whether, we suspect it's a heroin overdose, but we don't know. That is where the ME's office will determine whether it is and that comes out through the Department of Health, that's where the statistics come from. If we are able to resuscitate them and they, and Narcan works with that, then we know it's a narc, it's a heroin overdose.
What section of the city do you tend to find most of your overdoses?
Yes.
Where is that at?
Everywhere.
Everywhere, all over?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I know if that was a higher rate.
You know, it, it really is not, it could be in the bathroom on a business on Williamson Road or Hurst Burger, it could be in a restaurant downtown, it could be at a restaurant or house in Raleigh Court, it could be in South Roanoke. It just, it's pretty much everywhere. Now, we have some peak areas, but it really is embedded throughout the community and it's not something that, and it's not, I'm going to tell you, Roanoke is not unique to this. Richmond, all urban cities have the same problem. We are not unique. So I don't want. Richmond, all urban cities have the same problem. We are not unique. So I don't want our residents to feel like we're not doing something that we should be doing. We are not unique. If you go to Richmond, you go down to South, you go to Virginia Beach, you hear the same things that's going on. So it is something that is, it's a nationwide epidemic.
And then, under your department priorities, where you got your recruitment and retention and the diverse workforce, on your staff, do you know how many in your minority ratio currently, women and men?
You know, it's changed. So I could not, I'm saying we're around between eight and 10%. And right now, only to have, I think it's two active women in the field. Of course, I have Chief Stone, I have Chief Smith. But we really got, and what we're doing is we're losing people in the hiring process because it was taking so long to get through. Or when we do have candidates, they're choosing other departments. And we've got to make sure that we are the department of choice for them. And that's, you know, the last time we had four or five females, we offered all females, but they either went to Salem or Orange County. And, you know, I don't know what the reason behind that was, but that's just the way it worked for us.
Yeah. And I think, let's see. I think that's it, except to just compliment you on your recruitment with your new process that you're putting in place. Change is good, and sometimes we don't understand it at the beginning, but then we see that change. So I do compliment you on the front end that this change is welcomed.
And it will be an everyday event. I will tell you that, and this is what's so unique about our organization, and I want members of council to hear this, the men and women that run the calls every day are driving this change. Okay? They know what the needs are, and we have a fantastic workforce. And they're very passionate about what they do. And just as early as Saturday, I was talking to Lieutenant, and he was out doing, helping with the CPR program in Mary's Library. And he said, you know, this is a really, I've been thinking about this, and what he's thinking about is going to work. And he's bringing the idea to the table. And then Friday, I was out at the training center, we have a person out there helping with the recruit school. And he's actually changed some of the philosophies of how recruit school goes. And then I have recruits that are supposed to be at lunch, and instead of taking the, you know, whatever they're doing for lunch, they're out here learning.
Right.
Inspiring them not only to, to do what's on the, on the syllabus, but we're giving them additional learning opportunities during the day, and they're excited about it. So it's the men and women that are making the changes in the organization that are driving some of this, because they're passionate about what they do. They got to ride side by side, live one-third of the life of these individuals. They want good people to work. And that's the driving force behind that. So I'm very proud of what they do. I'm very proud of the accomplishments they made. And even this last year, our performance indicator slid a little bit. But let me tell you something, they had a lot of stuff to do, and they got it done.
Well, I'm glad you're embracing that. And that helps to build their confidence. And like you said, with them having a passion, that's important. That's really important, and that drives that. Good for you. Thank you.
Chief, great report. Thank you. Thank you and your staff for what you're doing. And I think it's good for our citizens and that we are safe. I appreciate all you do.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right.
Y'all have a great day. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Mayor, the, the second briefing will be a continuation of the discussion we've had over a couple of different meetings regarding youth vaping and e-cigarette as well. This time, actually, we're going to hear from the youth with this as well. So if you all want to come up and?
I was about to say, y'all could come up and get some of these seats up front here.
So while that gets pulled up, hello, I'm Mackenzie Chitwood, and I'm with Blue Ridge Behavior Healthcare. And I just want to thank you guys for allowing the Roanoke Youth Leadership Alliance to present to you guys today. And I'm going to go ahead and let Heaven come on up and start our pres, their presentation.
Hi, my name is Heaven Smith.
Hi, my name is Heaven Smith. I am a seventh grader at John P. Fishwick Middle School. The Roanoke Youth Leadership Alliance is, wait, hold on, sorry, y'all. The Roanoke Youth Leadership Alliance is for youth sixth grade and up, that meet at the Women's Girls Club every Friday. When we meet, we work on our leadership skills that have a positive impact on the community. In the past, Ryla has performed a social known campaign in a violent, environmental scam, and presented to City Council, developed a newsletter that was given to over 3,000 residents in the Southeast Roanoke, and volunteer at the SPCA. Today, we're going to talk, talk about youth access to vapes and the importance of reducing youth access. Olivia is now going to talk about, Olivia is now going to talk about what is a vape.
Hello, my name is Olivia, and I go to Woodrow Wilson Middle School. Vapes are an electric, electronic device that heats up liquid that contains nicotine, an addictive chemical. Vapes have a heating device that turns that liquid into vapor that is inhaled. Vapes can have up to 5,000 plus per vape. Nicotine is a substance in cigarettes and vapes that can lead up to high blood pressure, increase in heart rate, and can lead to heart attacks, lung damage, and cancer. Vapes come in all different flavors. The most popular flavors I see kids using are blue raspberry, watermelon kiwi, and blueberry ice. The most popular see, the most popular that I see are Mr. Fog and Elf Bars, as seen on the pictures, as seen in the pictures on the slide. Marquis is now going to talk about how vape companies target youth.
Hello, my name is Marquis, and I go to John P. Fishwick Middle School. Vaping companies are targeting my peers by having candy flavored e-juice. They are also targeting them by as that appeal to youth. Vaping companies are making devices smaller and easier to hide from teachers and guardians. For example, as seen on the slide, they're discussing them as holos, USBs, and more. I'm now going to pass the mic to Olivia.
Most vapes that are sold contain nicotine, an extremely addictive chemical. All vapes have heavy metals, including nickel and tin. As seen on the, as seen in the chart, vapes have many carcinogens and toxins. Their brain does not develop until age 25. Those who vape before their brain has developed can harm the parts of the brain that control contention, learning mood, and impulse control. In Roanoke City, 30-day use of vapor products in 2021 for middle school sixth and eighth grade youth was 8%, and for lifetime, it was 12.9%. For, for high school youth in 2021, 30-day use was 10%, and lifetime was 25%. However, over the years, we have seen a roller coaster of percentages with the middle school and high school vaping data. One year it will go up, and the other year it will go down. For example, in 2017, 30-day use for high school was 21%. In 2019, it increased to 32%. Shiva is now going to talk about the dangers of youth vaping.
Hello, my name is Shiva, and I go to John P. Fishwick Middle School. Nicotine by kids can harm parts of the brain that control attention, attention, learning mood, and impulse control. Our brains are creating new memories and learning new skills which are called synapses. Our brains are creating them faster than the adult brain. However, nicotine changes the way that these synapses are formed. The CDC states that vaping has been associated with mental health, health symptoms such as depression. Another important thing to remember is that the long-term effects of vaping have not yet been studied and are still unknown. The Virginia Alcoholic Beverage Control performs compliance checks at stores that sell alcohol to make sure they are not selling to minors. Stores that sell alcohol have to register and be licensed by the state. Stores that sell tobacco do not have to be registered or have a license. Since the stores that sell tobacco are not registered, how do we know they are not following, that they are following the law and not selling to minors? This is a great way to reduce youth access. It could be as simple as requiring stores that sell tobacco to check a box on their business license saying that they sell tobacco. Ariana is now going to end our presentation by talking a little bit about cannabis.
Hello, my name is Ariana. I also go to John P. Fishwick Middle School. Regulated synthetic hemp products are being sold in convenience stores in our community. The packaging and advertisements are targeting kids in the community. This is important as we want to protect our peers and be sure to reduce youth access. There has been laws and regulations passed that will apply June 1st of this year. Retail cannabis has not yet been legalized in the state of Virginia. But as Virginia works to create a retail market, we look to our local leaders to ensure there will be enforcement to reduce access. Thank you for your patience in listening to what we needed to say. Hopefully, we have brought some important issues to your attention about vaping and tobacco products. If you have any questions, please reach out to Mackenzie Chitwood. Thank you.
Yes, I just want to give a quick shout out to my youth who have been practicing this for months. They created the slides, they created what they wanted to say. I was just there to guide them. So this was all on them. And I just want to reiterate kind of what their ask is. So we talked about youth access and the importance of reducing access, youth access to vape products. And they talked a little bit about adding a box where the, where the stores can just check whether they sell tobacco or not, which will help a lot with compliance checks from ABC, which then return will hopefully reduce youth access.
Vice Mayor, can I go right down?
Thank you. Thank you all. You were amazing. And thanks for your hard work on this. Could we go back to the slide that shows the different delivery? Yes. I really want us to take a look at this. This is staggering and very concerning. I first heard about the USB thing a couple of months ago, and I was like, unbelievable. But there you go. What, we're clearly seeing all of these things showing up, right?
Yeah, so some of them, as you can see, some things are vapes in there, and some things aren't. So it's kind of the goal is like, which one is and which ones aren't. So if you can see in the top, next to the thing that has the yellow, the orange, and the pink, there's a USB, but then below that is what we call a jewel. And then over to the side, I think you guys have seen like the highlighters that look like those pointy things. So over the colorful one, on the far side, is a vape, which looked just like the other two highlighters there. So yeah, there's only two vapes in that picture, but it kind of shows how hard it can be for, to spot these things, especially if I have them, or, you know, if you've had them in their pencil pouch, at home on my, on their desk, whatever it may be. Yes.
Thank you. I know that some parents have reached out to me and probably other council members about concern of the lack of, I guess, regulation or oversight, especially in some of the local convenience stores that, that sell tobacco or sell these products. And you all asked about some kind of box to check. Is, is that something that would just be an ask of the businesses, or is there other action that we need to advocate for on a state level to have, to better reduce access?
Yes, I think that, so we're seeing zero nicotine vapes coming out now, which we have spoke to a couple individuals about these. And we're, we're understanding that they're allowed to be sold to youth because the nicotine is the regulated product. So since these have no nicotine in them. So that is our fear right now with that, and that it's really hard for, for those that we've spoke to, that's hard for law enforcement to kind of, they see a kid vaping in the community, it's kind of hard for them to approach them because it may be zero nicotine, and they're not sure where it stands. So I think definitely education pieces can be added in for law enforcement and for parents, what to look for. But going back to your question, so definitely having a statewide regulation system would be great for compliance checks in order to reduce youth access. But I can, I'm leaning more towards the education in our community as we're seeing it as a community problem right now. But statewide, just educating about implementing something where we can, where we know where all the stores are. Because right now, we do counter tools in the Roanoke Valley, Blue Ridge Behavior Healthcare, where we basically drive through the whole Roanoke Valley trying to find these stores that are selling any nicotine products. And that's kind of how we're keeping track of them statewide now through sign.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
I was just going to share with the audience today that, that there is a report that will be done this year. Delegate Patrick Hope carried legislation that the ABC is supposed to assess a licensing scheme for liquid nicotine products. This zero nicotine aspect is really interesting to me, and hopefully, there's something we could consider in our legislative agenda to address that situation. Because children shouldn't have access to vaping products regardless of their nicotine usage in them. But we should have a report later this year that we can look at and see the potential licensing scheme.
Awesome. Thank you.
No more questions? All right. Thank you so much, and thank you, young people.
Thank you.
For coming up.
Mayor and council, we'll move to our third and probably longest presentation. So we'll, we'll move through this as quickly as we're able to do so. And we're actually going to try to cover four different things associated with this briefing. One of those is a refresher on the city's approach regarding the reduction of gun violence. Present an update on the actions that have been taken, as well as the areas for possible enhancement or adjustment as we go forward. And we've been at this for a little over two years under this approach. And so this is a way in which to kind of pivot where it is necessary as well. We're also going to highlight some of the additional efforts associated with summer. So we'll talk about those toward the end of this. And then we'll continue from the April council workshop. Of course, we had that extended workshop, and then we've kind of pulled pieces out of that workshop to come back here and talk a little bit deeper. Last meeting, we talked about the Gun Bonds Prevention Commission presented their strategic plan in a joint meeting with you all. Today, we'll actually continue our conversation regarding Star City Safe. And I'll, I'll talk about that in an introduction. And Jeffrey will actually, Jeffrey Powell will actually be presenting that part of the, the presentation as well. Each of you should have at your place, and you were also provided this ahead of time. So I'm certainly not intending to go through this document in, in great detail at all. I just want to kind of hit some of the highlights. And again, this is intended to provide a refresher on the city's approach, as well as presenting an update on those actions, and identifying areas for, for enhancement as we go forward. As you all know, and as has been talked about repeatedly, obviously, gun violence is a national issue. Every weekend, it feels like. You look at the national news, you look at the regional news, and certainly occasionally, the, the local news, and you see the impact of gun violence across the country. Even though it is a national issue, it certainly has local impact. So I don't want to simply dismiss it as, well, this is a national issue, because it obviously is affecting our community locally. Gun violence impacts the entire community, and as we have said from the beginning of this, therefore requires a response from the entire community. Every person, every household, every neighborhood, every place of worship, every business, every organization, and every level of government has a responsibility. Each of those have a unique responsibility. So an example I've given in other instances is that while there are things that we can do locally, one of those that we cannot do has anything to do really with the availability of guns. Those are ultimately left at the state and federal level as we, as we work through. Elected officials, though, at the local level, do have the responsibility to ensure that policies are in place that address gun violence, champion the city's response, and lead engagement with the community. City government has a responsibility to use its police power to prevent and respond to acts of violence. However, evidence throughout the nation has demonstrated that increases in violence have never been resolved through policing and justice alone. They're obviously a critical element of that. But rather, evidence demonstrates that policing and justice must be accompanied by a variety of other actions and occurrences, many of which are related to root causes, including economic conditions, poverty, substance use, mental health trauma, and so on. Based on the evidence of what has worked elsewhere, the response that has been undertaken by, by you, by the Gun Bonds Prevention Commission, and by us in the administration and the organization, has been one that has focused on enforcement and justice alongside prevention and intervention. And again, that response, as effective as it can be, will be limited by what happens in the rest of the community, as well as what happens at the state and federal level. Because again, there are certain things that we simply cannot do, either as government here in our community, or as local government, as compared to state and federal government as well. The city of Roanoke has, has goals around this, and none of these should come as surprises. I think every person in our community would embrace these goals in that ensuring that residents, households, businesses, visitors, and neighborhoods remain safe, and incidents of violence are as rare as practical. And when they do occur, that justice is achieved for the victims of violence. Intervene where the potential for harm may present, may be present, and thereby avoid acts of violence. Prevent acts of violence with a particular focus on keeping youth from engaging in risky behaviors. We'll be talking later today about amendment to the city's curfew ordinance as a response to a part of that as well. Address the root causes of conditions demonstrated to contribute to acts of violence. These includes access to weapons, poverty, substance use, mental health trauma, and so on. And then support others in the community working alongside the city government to accomplish these same goals. Again, this is not something that we can, as a city, nor should, as a city, take on, on our own. about amendment to the city's curfew ordinance as a response to a part of that as well. Address the root causes of conditions demonstrated to contribute to acts of violence. These includes access to weapons, poverty, substance use, mental health trauma, and so on. And then support others in the community working alongside the city government to accomplish these same goals. Again, this is not something that we can, as a city, nor should, as a city, take on, on our own. There are a set of specific strategies that the city has in place to respond to those goals, those objectives. Each of those are grounded in evidence-based practices. And you all have heard me say this before, that these evidence-based practices were in place prior to COVID. It is not as clear as to which of these ultimately will work post-COVID. But they are, at the moment, the best evidence that is, is available. And so these are things that you've heard us talk about before, such as the Cure Violence Model, the Focus Deterrence Approach, Public Health Approach, and Project Ceasefire. Those are four of the models that exist in the country that are evidence-based, that we are relying upon as we build our, our approach to, to addressing gun violence. The, the components of those models have demonstrated success throughout the, throughout the country. But they also have a set of components to them that are common, really regardless of the, the size of the community or the specifics. Those include a focus on gang affiliation in youth, use of an organizing or working group, detection and interruption. And that includes things like data, intelligence gathering, street outreach, offender-focused, identifying risk factors associated with violence, and so on. Behavior change, that includes street outreach, violence interruption, connection to services, restorative practices, access to community economic resources, engagement with ex-offenders, and so on. And then changing community norms. And that may include awareness and communication campaigns, community building activities, conflict resolution, and others. Those, those components are common in all of those models. And hopefully, you, you can recognize efforts that we're doing in place with each of those. And we'll be, again, going through those in, in just a few moments as well. Those are the evidence-based practices that have resulted in reductions in gun violence. Again, most of that reduction occurred pre-COVID. So I think most of the nation, most of the communities in the nation are still struggling to determine which of those evidence-based practices actually will have an effect in this current environment. There are also a number of innovations taking place here locally, as well as across the country, which arguably, at some point, will then build the evidence as to what works as we move forward. I'm going to pivot into kind of the, that sort of the context, if you will. Pivot into the, the three areas that I've talked about, the enforcement, justice, the intervention, and the prevention piece. Talk about those strategies and just identify a few actions that are in place under each of these. So in enforcement and justice, this runs the gamut. So this is work that, with your help, we've been doing that includes increasing retention and recruitment of law enforcement officers. That includes the compensation increases that you have approved over the last couple of years, as well as a series of, a series of bonuses, which include recruitment bonuses, retention bonuses, and others. That's one strategy. Another strategy in this category is to collaborate with regional, state, and federal law enforcement, and prosecutors in operations, investigations, and prosecutions. Two examples of that includes a collaboration between local, regional law enforcement, Commonwealth Attorney's Office, Virginia Attorney General, and the U.S. Attorney on Prosecutions. And of course, the U.S. Attorney presented at your workshop some of the results of, of those efforts as well. Another example, or another action in that strategy is collaboration with regional, state, and federal law enforcement via Star City Drug and Violent Crime Task Force. So there are joint operations that are taking place with, with those individuals. And of course, the Fugitive Task Force, which actually has been very engaged in the last couple of apprehensions of individuals that had committed acts of violence. Another strategy is the proactive geographical policing. This is where it's neighborhood-based hotspot emphasis. This includes weekly organizational meetings by the Roanoke Police Department, where they determine where best to deploy their resources. And through that identification of hotspots, what that typically results in is more random, frequent patrols. And certainly, if you have questions later, the chief can kind of explain how that actually works as its way through. You've also heard the chief present before a focus on offender-focused policing. This is through those same meetings that I just mentioned, that are weekly meetings that are held at the, at the police department, where not only do they identify those hotspots, they also identify key offenders. And those offenders become the subject of additional intelligence gathering and, and apprehension operations. Another part of the offender-focused policy, or policing strategy is aggressive investigation and apprehension of those perpetrators. This had led us up until this most recent homicide over the weekend, that all homicides that have occurred this year have been cleared through police work, through investigation, meaning there has been a suspect retained. Many of those were actually secured by those partnerships that I mentioned earlier, that Fugitive Task Force, in working with our state and federal partners as well. Another strategy that is used in this, in this category is the efficient and effective use of current resources. And this includes things like the anonymous tip line, as well as the organizational assessment that is currently underway in PD. So that's a quick overview of the, of the strategies that we're using in the enforcement, justice side. For the same on the intervention side, there are strategies which include the employment of the youth and gang violence prevention coordinators, Chris, Chris Roberts is in this capacity, as well as two outreach workers. And includes direct engagement with high-risk gang-affiliated youth. This is done through case management, as well as our Credible Messenger Program. Direct engagement with victims of gun violence. This includes the, the recently approved hospital-based intervention program that Carillion Clinic is operating. And that is, that operation is somewhat independent of the city, because the intent is that there is a way in which to intervene with those potential, sort of retribution efforts as well, that actually are handled to some degree outside of law enforcement. Another strategy is the deployment of coordinated resources and connections to service, services in areas impacted by gun violence. This is the work of our reset team. So obviously, as you all know, when there is an act of violence in an area, the reset team moves into that area. You may have heard in the news as well, the news seems to cover this quite a bit in, in Danville. You hear them talk about the Project Heel. And there's a couple of others in Lynchburg as well. We've had this in place for over two years as well, that when this incident, when an incident occurs, the reset team goes out, they're making connections with the families and individuals in those neighborhoods to be able to connect to other resources as well. Mental health training and trauma-informed training from the, inside the police department, as well as throughout the community is another strategy. That is in partnership with Blue Ridge Behavioral Healthcare, as well as others. That is expanding as a result of the Marcus Alert System. It will actually be expanding in July as well. And we'll certainly be talking about that more over the next several months. And then the, the final strategy is risk-focused intervention. Again, this goes back to those weekly meetings that the police department holds, and the identification of those high-risk individuals, again, resulting in additional intelligence gathering on those individuals and/or connecting them to outreach coordinators, so that they can start getting connected to resources that may enable them to remove themselves either from harm's way or from being a perpetrator of violence. On the, in the prevention category, some of the strategies include the establishment, obviously, that you all established the Gun Violence Prevention Commission to assist council addressing the gun violence. That goes back to, if you remember, and the kind of components in those common models, having a, for lack of a better term, kind of a steering committee, or a, a group that is responsible or, or involved in that is an example of that. Safer neighborhoods, these include things ranging from the gun lock distribution to the recent support that you all had with Fed Up, where they're assisting families with immediate and long-term support after acts of gun violence. Another strategy is the social emotional learning and family support. These include the, a number of family educational programs, trauma-based training, ending even includes the Gun Violence Emergency Relocation Project, where someone whose family is in harm's way because they are either attempting to escape from gang activity, or they're actually a target of gang activity, we have a program in place that helps them relocate to, to safety as well. Another strategy is reducing gang activity violence and recidivism. This includes conflict resolution programs. It includes the work that the sheriff is doing, and the sheriffs in the jail, and working with community partners to increase access for those folks that will be leaving the jail and returning into our community. Another strategy is increased community awareness of available resources. This was a part of the discussion you all had last month with the joint meeting with Gun Violence Prevention Commission and the, the awareness campaign that they're getting ready to, to roll out. But it also includes other things like bridging the community gap, which is, of course, a partnership with TAP and others in the community to raise awareness of violence in our community. And then, as mentioned, the, the deployment of coordinated resources and connections through things like, like Reset, for example, and Operation Neighborhood Pen Point. A couple of other strategies include connecting high-risk youth to services. You'll hear actually quite a bit more about this when Jeffrey comes up, because this is an instrumental part of our Star City Safe Program as well. And that includes coordinating enhanced and expanded city services. I'm not going to go through the list because it's lengthy of those items. But this includes, again, things like extended hours at our libraries, as well as recreation centers, partnerships with groups like boxing and brawling, YMCA, arts and cultural tutoring services, counseling services, mentoring services by ex-offenders and, and others that you'll hear more about here shortly. Another strategy is building trust and relationship with area youth. Again, this is through those mentoring, tutoring, and counseling services. Another strategy is focused physical crime prevention enhancement. This included partnering and coordinating with, for example, businesses in downtown to expand lighting and cameras in areas where there have been acts of violence. This includes a conversation that's underway right now that will result in some funding to the housing authority to add additional cameras and lighting and known hotspots in those areas. It also includes crime prevention and violence reduction that I'll talk about for the summer, which is a partnership with the Roanoke Police Department and a number of businesses in the community. And then, of course, ongoing initiatives at addressing root causes of violence. All of these should be quite familiar with you, because these are long-term investments that you've been involved in, including increased funding for education, increased workforce training, poverty reduction programs, addressing food desert issues, addressing housing conditions, addressing substance use treatment and recovery, and increased mental health funding and collaboration. So those, those are the strategies that we have in place for each of the three categories, and some examples of the actions that have been taken with it. As I said, we've been at this for a little over two years. And if you think of what has occurred in the last two years, a lot has changed across the nation, as well as here. And so certainly, it would stand to reason that our approach would need to continue to pivot as we adapt to the circumstances going on. For example, many of the most recent shooting incidents have had more to do with individuals that are engaged in some kind of dispute versus individuals that are embedded in one of our, our gangs or having a relationship with gangs. That requires a different approach than might with, with gangs as well. So some of the enhancements that we either already have started, or that we have identified as opportunities to begin moving forward with, include a coordination meeting involving the chair and vice chair of the Gun Violence Prevention Commission, city manager, chief of police, reset coordinator, youth and gang violence coordinator, and Star City Safe coordinator. All of those individuals meet on an as-needed basis already. This would be an intentional opportunity for the, the leaders of each of those initiatives to come together and make certain that we're maximizing our potential. That will begin this month and will be continuing monthly as we go forward. As you heard from the Gun Violence Prevention Commission at the meeting last month, an enhanced focus on the Northwest Roanoke neighborhoods. Another area is the possible convening of area nonprofit leadership to enhance collaboration and coordination of efforts. We have a lot of partners in the community that, again, we're working on together with on a one-off kind of basis on programs. This would be an opportunity to pull everybody together and have that discussion as a, as a group as well. Expansion of reset and past offenders mentor opportunities. We have all of the foundation in place, and we have the mentors in place. We now have the opportunity to expand those as we can accumulate more mentors into the, into the program. Council still has the opportunity to respond, obviously, to the recommendations from the Gun Violence Prevention Commission through their strategic plans, that may also further enhancements. Direct engagement by the Roanoke Police Department and others with those with known gang affiliations to raise awareness of consequences and connect to services. This is something that already occurs when it's able to occur. This would be something that would be much more intentional, perhaps, than what we in the past have been able to, to do as well. An awareness campaign focused on, in the known hotspots and on adults, with emphasis on conflict resolution. This is the pivot, where as we're starting to see more of these issues, again, that arise from disputes, trying to actually figure out ways to reach individuals that might be prone to, to engaging in that kind of activity. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in the summer activities as well. Expanded summer activities, which I will talk about here in just a few moments, and expanded neighborhood-oriented policing. Of course, you all know, with the, the recent promotion of Captain Boswell, we're actually able to have more of our efforts now back in the neighborhoods again as well. That started in April and will continue to expand. So those, those are some of the areas that we've identified, that we can take what we've been doing and continue to expand or enhance what we have been doing as we move forward. And again, this is really focused on the city's part. This, obviously, as I mentioned earlier, we will similarly need a response from the community, as well as from our state and federal partners, if we're really going to continue to make headway on this as well. I'm gonna, I'm gonna skip all the way ahead on the document that you have to the, toward the end, where it talks about the summer programs and enhancements. Because I just want to touch on these before I turn it over to, to Jeffrey to talk about a specific piece of this. And I'm not going to go through all of these. There's a lot on this list. Obviously, as you all know, here, as in elsewhere across the nation, when summer comes, so does typically increases in call volume, and unfortunately, increases in violent activity. And so, well, every summer, we offer additional kind of programming and activities, particularly for the youth. Predominantly, that's been done in the past, simply because school is out of session. And certainly, we will continue to do those. But we're also increasing the, the summer offerings that have more of an orientate, orientation toward high-risk individuals and in neighborhoods where we know there are issues and challenges. And we will also be increasing the law enforcement response through the summer months. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna highlight a couple of these that are in here. Again, some of these you'll be familiar with already, because we talked about these before. But certainly, the summer activities starting in June at Washington Park due to the closure of the pool, as we work on the construction of the new pool. We've got a couple of different basketball camps that will be underway as well. Our SROs, as they rotate out of the schools. So for the summer, typically, our SROs come out of the schools and go back in to patrol. Those SROs will actually be working on adjusted details, whether it be focusing on assisting violent crime and domestic violence detectives, and victim outreach and fugitive apprehension. So this is one of those areas where we're able to actually use some of our resources to focus in on those individuals. Domestic violence is a good example, where there are, there are offenders that have been involved in other violent acts, maybe not with a gun, but other violent acts. This will give us the opportunity to engage directly with those individuals as an effort, perhaps, to ensure that there's less likelihood that they will then find themselves in a dispute that will turn into an act of violence as well. I mentioned earlier, the police department actually partnering with a number of organizations and businesses through what's referred to as the Crime Through Environmental Design Risk Assessment. What this simply means is engaging, for example, with the housing authority, but also a number of private businesses on how to actually make their place of business or their residences safer from acts of violence, and also how their employees can better prepare themselves for dealing with those, those types of situations as well. There will be Straight Street programming that will be partnership with Straight Street, as well as with the police department. The youth HQ summer hours are underway. Our summer youth work program is underway. Open gym hours at Eureka Recreation Center will continue as well. Obviously, there's a great deal of summer reading programs. And again, I won't go into details on these, because Jeffrey will talk about these a bit more as well. There's some pro, summer programming that Reset will be doing, targeted to the nine-to-13 year olds. So it's a group that we have found that is in particular need of, of focus as, as we work our way through, through these things. Obviously, you'll be talking later today about amending the, the youth curfew. That will be another activity that, if approved, will increase for the summer. There will be enhanced Virginia State Police partnerships with additional troopers assigned to Roanoke for, for enforcement with specific emphasis, emphasis on violent crime. The SROs that I mentioned also will be the ones involved in the enforcement of your youth curfew. So that'll up the, the enforcement component of that. The police department will be inserting more individuals, more officers, both on foot and in patrol vehicles, into areas that our crime analysis suggests that such a presence would prevent a crime from happening. It's referred to as our blue light steady burn. Basically, it means when they're in those neighborhoods, they're actually running, if they're in the patrol vehicle, they're running with a certain level of lights on, so that folks kind of know that they're in the neighborhood and there's more attention provided to them. A couple of weeks ago, this foot patrol effort was done in downtown, where there was a, a walking presence of the officers in the area. More of that will be happening throughout the summer. Strategically deploying traffic checkpoints in select areas. And as I already mentioned, the community engagement team will be working much more directly out in the neighborhoods as well. And then finally, we will be, as we have done in the past, collaborating with U.S. Marshal Service on warrant operations, which means we will be rounding up folks that have outstanding warrants with a focus on violent offenders and fugitives working or present in our community as well. So again, those are just some of the summer enhancements, but certainly wanted to bring that awareness to you all. And if it's okay, what I'd like to do is, I'm sure there may be questions with this. If we can hold the questions on this, so that I can have Jeffrey do the piece associated with the Star City Safe portion, then we'll come back and take questions across the whole with that, if that's okay.
Okay. Thank you.
What I'm gonna do is, at the workshop we had, if you all remember, we had a number of different presentations around each of those areas of prevention and intervention and enforcement. And everybody is very passionate about what they do. And so... And so even using four and a half hours didn't allow us to cover everything to the depth that we really wanted to be able to do so. So last month, you heard from the Gun Violence Prevention Commission, really digging deeper on their strategic plan with it as well. Today, we want to share with you more details on the Star City Safe initiative. So let me first set the stage of what this is and then let Jeffrey kind of go into the details. So you all know, because we've talked about this before, but it's been a year and a half ago, I guess, about a year and a half ago, Jeffrey came to me and said that he wanted to propose something to the directors that would allow an approach where the directors could support the work that the police department was doing in addressing gun violence with a particular emphasis on youth. And so after our conversation, Jeffrey made that pitch to the directors. The directors embraced it, and so what we have is this is the administration's response to a particular focus on youth. And what it really is designed to do is to actually take each of our silos, if you will, each of our departments, and cut across those silos so that we can provide services directly to those that are in need in our community, again, with a particular emphasis on youth as well. So even though we have community partners and we have a lot of them in this, this is really the whole-of-government approach or the city's approach. Inside the city, the directors actually working together to try to respond to this alongside our police department as well. And with that, I'm gonna let Jeffrey walk you through this, and at the end, we'll come back and answer any questions that you might have.
Morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council.
Good morning.
City Attorney. As Bob alluded, this is our response, the administration's response to gun violence. And the partners that we have of all the departments, but the major departments we have are Human Resources, which Angie will be here and her team, and they will talk about the apprenticeship program. We have Patrick Boas, who's here from Parks and Recs, who will talk about the recreation in detail of their programs and what they're gonna be doing this summer. Also, we have Ms. Bee and Nathan from the libraries that are gonna be here as well. Lord is not here. I'm gonna try to answer his questions as well on this side pertaining to the whole-of-government piece of his responsibilities. And then we have our community partners that I will introduce as we go through the presentation. Okay? So I'm gonna try to get through it. The presentation is primarily segmented on what the activities that they did in each one of the department's areas and the accomplishments. So it should be a pretty simple walkthrough. So just to reiterate, is that this is the city's administration's approach under Bob's leadership, under Angie, and under Clarence, and soon under Chief, as to how we as the government, the administration, will address gun violence over and beyond what the police department is doing. So the focus that we primarily work on in Star City Safe is a focus on prevention and intervention. That's primarily what we do. We do some slight mitigation, but primarily we're here to prevent by leveraging the programs or the expertise of the current departments as what they already do. That's what we do. So it provides additional funding, which I've listed some of those funds. So as you can see here, and I'm not gonna hit them too hard, because I think we've already been through this before, is that we originally started out with $280,000. What happens is, we had $300,000, $20,000 went to the enterprise fund that was used by the Burglars Center. $4,000 of those dollars went into programming to do activities with children and teenagers based upon activities at the Civic Center. The remaining $1,600,000 went into collaboration with the Violence Prevention Program, Chris Roberts, and a program that he's working on that has not kicked off yet, so I'm not gonna steal his thunder, but I think it's gonna be pretty innovative and very, very different. And he'll come forward once we get that ready with Robert and talk about what they've done. And then this year received an additional $250,000 from the grants. And then Angie, with her expertise and support, which we couldn't do without, she went out and found an additional $150,000 that we put toward the program. So that's kind of where the money is, and that's what we've gotten so far. Okay, so we'll start with Parks and Recreation. This is just a, I guess, a mosaic or pictures of the various different types of activities that Patrick and his team put together utilizing his funding. So just make sure everybody understands, when Lord and Robert came to me, we took the funds that were given to us and then went to these departments and asked, what do you think we can do? They each came back with their proposals. Then a committee of three of us sat down, looked at those proposals, and determined which activities these departments will hold, okay? So it's not conclusive. It's what they valued based on their expertise, I think between the two of them, about 40 years in juvenile justice and in that system. So we balanced what their thoughts are, and that's how we created the program. So here are just some of the activities. I think most of you all are familiar with those. We also did a special relations with CIAA, which was the first time they held a volleyball championship second year, but it was the first time the city was able to bring them into the community, in which I think they had a nice video of their activity. So we hope to do that again this year. And some of this Patrick and his team created on their own. So some of the highlights, and I'm just gonna run through these real brief, and then if you have detailed questions, we'll bring Patrick up to, you know, go deeper. But we've had over 5,100 participants in these programs. We funded the e-studio and the esports program, which we will take forward again this summer. We have Doug Pitzer here, who's gonna manage that for us this year. And then I just pulled the end-of-year celebration, and then also he did some activities this year with the Gun Violence Prevention Team. So they have taken, so we touch everybody through the program. All right, so we're going to libraries. We have Nathan and, of course, Ms. Bee. She's gonna go into more detail, but they've done so much that I didn't know how to really handle this slide, to be honest. You know, I don't know. Bob and I looked at, I even had my wife look at it, and she was like, I don't know what to tell you to do. So I just ducked it in, so blame it on me. And then here's some of the data points that the library provided, and Ms. Bee will go into more detail, but you ought to understand the dynamics of what's inside the numbers. What we're seeing is it's just a vast number of more youth coming through the programs and participating. We still do meals on Wednesdays, and she has meal and a movie, but we also have ongoing projects, ongoing activities each and every day, and we have some of those providers here that provide those activities. We have Elizabeth here, and we also have Mr. Pitzer. And they provide activities associated around what's going on in Mayoral's Library. So we feel blessed that Ms. Bee and Sheila and the team has embraced this program. All right, and that's the Burglars Center. Those are the activities that we utilized Star City Safe funded for, and over 200 youth have participated in those weekly activities. And whenever we had activities, they got to participate. So those are photos of them at the activities. I think the ice bumper cars are probably my favorite because then I could bump them. Okay. And so as they say in the fraternity, I mean, mugged and fracked. All right, and this is our flagstone program, which is the apprenticeship program, which Angela, her team, they are all here, and I'm very proud of the efforts. They've put over 260 hours of preparation and trained into the five cohorts. We also pay the students for being in the program, so we've put over $5,000 out in salaries just for taking the training program. So we feel like this is our flagstone program, and this year, under Ms. White, the program is extended to more outside partners than we've ever had, working with the kids and working with the apprentice. So Ms. White did a great job of pulling together various partners, from the sheriff's office to the division center, to the workforce. Let's see, banking. Let's see, we've had presentations from the police department, so I feel blessed that we brought that in. So here's a little kind of breakdown. We've had 27 apprentices graduate, 11 apprentices are participating currently now. Their graduation is June 22nd, and Judge Ozley's where, I believe, is the keynote speaker. We have 12 departments in the Hotel Roanoke who have hosted apprentices. So we've had full participation from the departments that within legally, based on the age of the youth, can have a youth. So some departments, such as mine, based on the work we do in general services, it's not quite as easy to place an intern in those types of jobs. We paid $15 an hour, 15 to 20 hours a week, and I think we're gonna extend it this period, I think, for five to six months. So we're gonna have longer periods with the interns than previously. And now we're gonna talk about Reset, and Lord is out, but I do want to say that Lord has, I feel a little lost without him. We spent so much time together, I've kind of asked the chief if he can kind of come to my team meetings. So he's more like a general services employee, so all my managers work with him as well in the divisions. And these are some of the activities that he's done with the children. He's taken the mentors up to the Juvenile Corrections Center and had them talk with youth that are under supervision. That's the boxing, some mentoring that his staff's doing. And he's also taken kids on hikes and field trips as a part of his program. And these are some of the other various activities that we've done, that we've partnered with. Here, we've done the haircut program in partnership with the barber shops. We've had open gym. We had opportunity with Brian Mann and Brian Wells with the Hotel Roanoke to take kids out to lunch into the hotel. We've taken them bowling. We've taken them down to the Science Museum. We have a young lady here who's being interviewed for a TV shot down at the museum, and we have a picture here in the middle of the mentors and family members taking them down to the hotel. Here, we have Jahir, who is in the ninth grade. We worked with Haberdasher, and we provided him a ninth-grade graduation suit, and that's him being fitted at that particular place. And here are a couple of guys messing with me at the museum. And so I'll just run through some of the numbers. Box fit program, so right near the contract call for eight participants a week, and we take those over to the box fit over at Norwich. I think you all, as a council, helped put that together, if I'm not mistaken. We go over there every week. So when I say eight, what we kind of do is I try to calculate how many hours are hands-on. So the next one is, they've had 328 hours of coaching, hands-on adult coaching, okay? With that, with those eight kids, as well as we send mentors, now I can't box, so I just go over there. But they are around the children, they're with the teens, and we found some positives. Lord actually took these kids up to Bayne Vista, I believe, for a sparring day last month. So they got to travel and box against other kids, so that was a great experience. Also, we have had 300 hours of supervised teen activities at the YMCA. Down at Kirk, where we take them on Wednesday nights, and we take 20 to 30 kids down there. Also, we have Jonathan here with Wyon Gainesboro. He partnered with us to allow us to work with some of the young ladies, and I'm getting the program, that stuff, so which one was it?
Humble Hearts.
Humble Hearts. So we had kids that come in through his program that worked with us at the library, and they were learning how to cook, took field trips, did a lot of things together. So we wanted to try to keep bringing that back, hopefully this year. We also had over 800. So we take 20 to 30 a week, so I kind of wanted you all to see, it's about 800 youth, but a lot of them could be the same youth. But it's the visits that I was trying to get a kind of measurement of how much time we spend with each one of the children. So if we take 800, then that meant we spent about, per person, we've probably had about three mentors. So we had 2,400 hours of contact with those children. We also have Doug Pitzer with Strokes a Genius. He'll be able to answer comments and questions regarding how we tutor, what he's finding and seeing what's going on in our relationship with the youngsters. We presently have four paid mentors. And we have our community partners, and I've got a list of them. I invited them today as a part of our efforts to talk about collaboration for the summer. So I do have Nicole Rawls. Doug Pitzer. Jonathan.
From the Y.
He's here today to talk about Beacons, if you have any questions. We have Inesto Muse and his team. Thank you for coming. We have Elizabeth Davis. Elizabeth is here. She can answer questions about summer programming and also about tutoring. Also not present, Kevin Price and Ron Parker, they weren't able to attend, but they contributed thousands of dollars in bus passes and bus to the program to help us move children. Josh Johnson's not here to present, but we're also in collaboration with him and what he has offered, and I've got a slide to kind of do that. So kind of what's next, Council? It's where we go from here after this is over. At December 12, 31, 24, where do we go? So we need to figure out how we're gonna fund these programs and keep the longevity for the long term. One of the things, as being a native Roanoke, is it appears that somewhere in here, between 2008, 2010, we start reducing our outreach to the kids, and then now it's come home to roost, unfortunately. So I don't know how we do it. I know y'all got a lot of stress on you, and I'm not trying to add anymore. We also need to strengthen our partnerships with the nonprofits, and I think that's what, under Bob and Angie's leadership, that I'm trying to do now, is if we've got them here today, they're here to answer any questions that you have, how we work together, how we communicate. They're showing their commitment to the city, and they're showing their commitment to the departments. Then we have to take a look at coordination of services, so we're not duplicating who's doing what for each child. So we maximize each dollar. I guess that's the MBA in there. We have to figure out how are we going to manage those dollars? And are they in the best place? And are we duplicating services? And I think we can manage that under Bob's leadership to figure out how we can do that. I think that's why he's gonna push for a meeting with some of the CEOs of the nonprofits. Let's figure out who's doing what and make sure we know where each child is gonna go, you know? That's one we want to do. Parental development strategies? I think what we're finding now is some of the challenges that we have in the household and that some of the efforts and money and resources that we're putting forward are not going to get any better until we get into that household and provide some developmental issues, strategies. So we're gonna work with the sororities, we're gonna work with some nonprofits, see if we can do some things to uplift, enhance, and improve the management of the household. And then we need to take the children, after Angie's group gets them ready and they complete it, and get them into jobs. We've gotta get these kids into jobs. They're not playing sports, they're not in after-school programs, Council. We have to get them into some kind of work and get them to that work. And then we need to determine how to close the transportation gaps. That's a major issue every time, every day we try to put something together. That's the Beacons program. And they're here to answer any questions you have on the programs, but I just wanted you to see some of what, and Parks and Recs having some activities. Shifting Paradigms also is here, and Beth is here as well, and then Summer Fun at Washington Park Esports. So that's pretty much what I have, and we're ready to take questions. I'll step out the way. Thank you very much for your attendance.
Thank you for indulging us for that period, that length of time for any questions. I did want to say again, of course, the Star City Safe effort, which we're, you know, sharing a little more detail with you today, is again only is again only possible, and it really is focused on prevention, as you see. And it's only possible because we also have efforts going on, on the enforcement side and the prevention side. Most of the youth that Jeffrey's talking about are referred to out of the reset program or with our youth and gang outreach folks and others coming into these programs, as well as open to the larger community for kids who hopefully have not found themselves in any kind of harms way and but still are looking for things to do as well and stuff. And of course, I would be remiss if I didn't say that, you know, we had the great fortune of having Jeffrey's work on this recognized by VML last year, where he received an award for these efforts. And so even though I'm very, very happy with the partners that we have and stuff, I know none of this would be happening if Jeffrey wasn't actually staying on top of this as well. So I certainly want to acknowledge that and thank him for that as well. And with that, happy to open up for any questions you have across the full spectrum, across the update on kind of the plan, as well as anything you want to dig deeper in Star City Safe. As Jeffrey has mentioned, all of the partners are here for Star City Safe. They can answer more detailed questions as well.
Well, let me go down. I'm going to go down the line and give everybody an opportunity to answer. I'll start with my right first. I just want to ask one question, Mr. Soto. And I think it's one that's been answered. And I want to use, well, I thought about using the term, but I've been advised that saying that at-risk kids is not the right term to use. How do we know we're getting the right kids in this?
Yeah.
In terms of?
Yeah, that's a good question. I'll have Jeffrey, you know, and we try to approach this at two levels. One level is leaving as many of these opportunities as open in it as they can. So when we extend the hours at Melrose Library, any youth can come in and participate in any of the activities that we have. That way, that barrier is removed from anyone, again, that hopefully has stayed out of trouble, and we want to help them continue to stay out of trouble. So that's one angle. Then the other angle really is through our referral program, and I'll let Jeffrey talk about that.
Man, that's a great question. And if you recall, when you come over to visit, this is what we've done. We went to the Police Department, to the chief. We took his overlay map of the crime. We laid that on it. Then we took the ages of the children, we put that on there. Then we took household incomes. Then the last layer, we wanted to look and see where do we have city facilities. That's how we came up with Melrose and Eureka. Eureka was the park center. Melrose was sort of the northwest. As you knew, as you know before, we were struggling with the Bill of Height. And that's been going on for twenty years. So that's kind of how, that was the best facility that we had. So that's where we put our focus. Also there, you had what I call a college campus concept. Because you had the library, you had the vision center, you had the basketball courts, you had the playground, you had the Goodwill building. So we already had like a college center. And then the residents or the students lived all the way up to, I would say, up Lafayette, not way up on Lafayette, not all the way over to Stanton, but some Stanton Park, I call, no-name area. And then we had, of course, the people in the Lansdowne area in up Melrose. So that's how we found. And based on data, that was the best place for us to put the program and also where we had our best facility. So we believe we do have the right match of where the location is based on those four or five criteria that we used.
The other thing I would add is, as Jeffrey mentioned, Star City Safe is really focused on prevention. So these are by and large youth that we're trying to ensure stay safe, don't become involved in either as a victim or perpetrator. The intervention piece, so those may be youth that are already involved in something that is causing harm. That's where Christopher Roberts, Chris Roberts and also his outreach workers and Lloyd come in in that regard. So they're actually addressing those in different ways. So the mentors that we have, that Jeffrey talked about, engage with them. And they're doing a case, it's basically a case management approach, which is each of those youth have an assigned case manager and then have a mentor. And so these are folks who might, for example, be trying to step out of a gang or who are otherwise trying to distance themselves from other problems and stuff. So that's handled a little bit differently and is more of the focus on the intervention side versus the prevention side.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to start to my right with Ms. Sanchez Jones. Do you have any questions?
No, I just want to commend the Gun Violence Commission for all the programs that they have. So you guys are really doing a great job in the community. Thank you.
I just really have a comment on the summer programs enhancements. I do appreciate seeing the additional enhanced Virginia State Police partnership with additional troopers assigned to Roanoke for enforcement with specific emphasis on violent crime. I think they could be particularly useful for addressing violent crime, which I think is a real root in our area. And then also seeing the SRO-adjusted summer detail. And not just as it relates to only SROs, but I know we have a number of sheriff's deputies that are involved as SROs and involving the Sheriff's Department and law enforcement capacities as much as we're able to. I think that will help address violent crime the most.
Yep, yep, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Well, thank you all for this great report. It's really comprehensive and reaching a lot of people and a lot of youth and their families. I think toward the end, when Jeffrey was outlining some of the challenge areas, I just wanted to reiterate a couple of these. We have identified and still have some grant funding that's available. And one of the roles that the commission has played is identifying additional grant funding. And we are continuing to work on that. But I think from council's perspective, one of the things we need to think about is, is there a way to leverage some local dollars in our general budget? So I think we need to be cognizant of that because while we've had this influx of prevention and intervention-based funding through grants, I'm not sure how long that's going to carry forward. So that's just something for us to earmark. You know, continuing to strengthen that partnership with nonprofit organizations. We currently have existing stakeholder meetings with nonprofits and with youth service providers. And so I'm hoping that we can just, you know, add this piece and make the presentation to them more comprehensive and strategic. Because I think that's a natural.
The group also of faith-based organizations.
Yes, yeah.
All of those grew out of, really out of COVID, out of the COVID response as well, yeah.
I really like your question about parental development strategies. I think that's really important. We've been very focused on youth and reaching, not only, as the mayor said, the youth who are experiencing great risk, but then digging down into that and finding out, you know, what risks are parents facing, what challenges are parents facing, and how to connect with them. Because we can, in these programs, we can have a significant impact with youth working one-on-one. But then how do we carry that over into those family relationships? And I don't know if that's something you want to just talk a little bit more about?
Well, I guess it came out of doing an analysis with Bob and Angie and Lloyd in preparing for the presentation today. And also just going back and talking to family and friends about where, what we're seeing and talking to the educators. It's just that, for example, we've got, Bob and I will be pushing out a program that came in from the governor's office, Councilman President, that has not gotten a lot of push from the community on this tutoring program. I mean, it's thousands of dollars that can go to the community. And that will help strengthen the families because it will give these children an opportunity to learn how to study. That's one of the first things, you know, you have to learn is how do you study? And of course, Council, Sanchez Jones, you're in the schools. You see the deficits in learning. So we've got to push the programs when they come out as well. And that will help the mother because that caregiver then won't have to be concerned about running up to the school or the child's in trouble. And I also have Doug Pitzer here, who can probably answer that more expertly than I.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmen, and Councilwomen.
Um, yes, could I plug this up real briefly, just to give you?
So that's where we are. He's got, we're working on a strategy, council. How do we, we've got to, we've got to work with these parents and these caregivers.
Okay, so one thing that we have noticed, what I'm doing is intensive-based tutoring with the individuals. At the moment, the schools, as you know, as Ms. Sanchez knows as well, there is a, there's a lot to deal with right now when we're talking about the school situations, trying to get these kids graduating, as well as dealing with the family, socioeconomic statuses, et cetera. We found this void, or I guess you could say gap, where because of virtual learning is a choice right now, some of the students are being displaced from the schools. And the option that they have, or really what they're being forced to do is just continue learning virtually. Now, the issue with that is the children have to teach themselves when they're on these virtual platforms, such as Indenium, I believe is the name. So what's been taking place is as they come to my location or as they're being referred through the reset program, we're doing inquiry-based learning, which is really just a question of where do you need the most help? Unfortunately, right now, because the schools are dealing with so much, they're not able to focus on these students for the amount of time needed to tackle these situations. So what we're really trying to do is just find these areas that they're really struggling in. And then we provide the assistance and support needed. As well as it's kind of turning into a mentorship as well because the students do this intensive-based learning are able to talk about the additional factors that are kind of burdens to them learning in the schools, such as in their community not having Wi-Fi, in their community not having safe spaces to actually do additional tutoring or learning sessions. And so we're really just trying to tackle all of those situations by providing a safe space, as well as allowing them to have that one-on-one tutoring, really just paying attention and giving them a space to really be able to talk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just had two other quick things. I noticed in the report, Bob, that the police are working with the Housing Authority on environmental design risk assessment. Is that something that could be expanded for where we're seeing the highest density of crime and incidents of gun violence?
Yeah, absolutely. The, one of the items that the chief and the department are working on is a number of businesses have actually contacted them to undergo kind of the same assessment. And so they're certainly working with them to do that as well. And I think as we do more of the neighborhood outreach through Captain Boswell and others, they'll be able to actually translate some of those same lessons out to homeowners and others in the area. We do have a significant amount of the funding that we had set aside for lighting is going to the Housing Authority as a part of their effort. But we do have other money as well to address streetlights and those kinds of things as well, if it is demonstrated that that would assist in some of those areas.
Thank you. That was a major part of our eighth recommendation in our strategic reports. I'm just, I'm glad to see that. The last thing is, the program at Melrose is incredible. It's a unique and exciting model, as are these other programs. I'm wondering if there's a need, based on what we're seeing with incidents, to expand that, to add another library? I don't know if there's been conversation.
Yeah, part of what we're having is a side conversation to this is actually not necessarily addressed to gun violence, as well as some of the other issues that are confronting our community. For example, one of the conversations we've had is there may need to be an effort similar to this effort in the southeast that is oriented around substance use. That is a much larger challenge in the southeast, particularly among youth, than we might find violence in those areas and that activity. So certainly could be. What we, and it goes back to something that Jeffrey said that we'll be talking with you all about as we work up the twenty-five budget, is we've been fortunate to be able to do these programs under either savings that we've had year over year or under grant programs. So some of those dollars, for example, pay the library staff to be working extra hours, pay to keep the lights on during that time and so on. So, yes, I think as we formulate that approach, if the capacity is there and if we can identify the funding that is there, I think expansion of it makes sense. And I wouldn't just include the libraries because some of our other activities that we have on the recreation side similarly would benefit from that kind of expansion as well.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
All right. Ms. Whiteboard?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Cowell and Mr. Powell, you've done an excellent job. I mean, there's so many nuances and so many things involved and a lot of people you had to coordinate to get all this information together. It's really been helpful because, you know, as a member of council, we hear all the time that, you know, what are we doing? What are we going to do this summer for the kids? You've already had nine annual programs that you've been doing. And then it looks like now we have about thirty. So we've got a lot of information out there. Whoever did this, I want to say, job well done. And that was my thought going through the process is that I wish we had something similar to this for all of the programs. And I know we're in the eleventh hour now, you know, they're about to get out of school. But it would be really helpful if the parents had sort of a handbook that listed all these programs and talked about them just like this. This is excellent. They can go to this and they can see what's happening. I know it's a lot to put something together like that, but I will say that it would be helpful for the parents. And perhaps we could coordinate with R C P S to do something like that because I know it's going to be expensive to do it as well, but it's well worth it to guide the parents.
Yeah, and some of the programs that actually are referenced in there are actually school programs as well. So similarly, being able to pull those in. Now, we do, all of these things that Jeffrey has up here, all of these are flyers that were actually, that we use throughout the community to alert folks to what's going on. We do have some of those, the library one is what you're referring to. We do have some of those in the parks as a similar product that actually gets generated as well. But yeah, it's not a bad idea to try to figure out if there was a way to kind of package up
Yeah, like the summer handbook.
sort of these Star City Safe kinds of things, yeah.
Yeah, I think that would be an excellent idea because it's clearly, it's here, clearly we're doing things. But not everybody is going to watch us Facebook Live. Not everybody is going to go to the website. But if we were to send something home with the parents, you know, that might be a little bit more helpful. That is certainly not a criticism. I want to say that you all have done an excellent job. I just want to make sure that this information gets to the parents who will need it this summer.
Absolutely. And Jeffrey just reminded me too that all of these flyers and stuff are also present in all of our library branches, as well as in this building, as well as others.
So you're saying flyers for all of these programs are going to be in?
Yes, yeah.
And you said, you mentioned Elizabeth about programs. Is Elizabeth in here? Maybe she can talk about dissemination of them or, did you say Elizabeth?
She's in charge of programs.
Oh, okay. Oh, I thought, oh, I thought she was, you said in charge of programs, okay.
Okay, she's here. She's a tutor for the program, the Star City, as well as she provides activities in libraries and also summer programs.
Okay, yeah, I didn't want to take up too much time. I just can't emphasize enough how important it is to get this information out there.
Yeah, and I think actually it's a good idea to try to package all of them together in some fashion.
And the only other thing is, to kind of reiterate what Vice Mayor Cobb said about the strategic planning, a lot of this is grant funding. So we just need to be prepared and let us know as council what we can do to make sure that we're able to do these programs because you've done a lot of, you put a lot of time and effort into developing these programs. And I think they're going to be really effective. We just want to be able to afford them. And I would like to be able to, you know, focus on that budget.
And we will still continue to pursue every grant opportunity there is. But we do know at some point, we do need to bring more of this in. And a lot of what's been done under Star City Safe already is in your general fund budget. We've been able to actually extract it from other areas and stuff as well. So I don't think it's as heavy a lift as probably it may seem.
Well, that's good because we definitely would want to be prepared. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson, I'll come back to you.
Thank you, Mayor.
My first question actually is about the blue light steady burn. That's something that I remember when I lived in DC, they started. And it's a great way to make sure that there's plenty, people know that there's a police presence throughout the city. With the program in DC, you were able to flag down that officer if you're in distress or anything like that. Is that something that would be, is that something that's part of this as well?
Yeah, I'll have the chief come up and explain that program. And it's actually directly related to the immersion effort that also the outreach folks under Captain Boswell are doing as well.
Good morning, Mayor. Vice Mayor, Members of Council. Yes, steady burn is exactly what you described, where the officers, when we say that, some people think that the officers will be in the neighborhoods with flashing lights. Not the case. Unfortunately, the equipment and the vehicles allow for the blue lights, just a portion of it, to burn steadily at a lower intensity, enough to be noticed as people go through the, as the officers go through the neighborhoods. So our goal at the Police Department is just not to ride through these hotspot areas and beyond with the steady burns on, but really engage the officers to get out of the vehicles and walk in the neighborhoods and make positive contacts and interactions with the citizens in that area. We've seen success with this. We've talked about this before. Recently, Hunt Avenue had a series of crimes and our officers were engaged in that area. We didn't utilize the steady burn at that time. Obviously, this is a newer technology on our vehicles, so all of them don't currently have it. But we utilized this strategy in the Hunt Avenue area to include officers getting out and engaging the citizens in that area. And it helped a lot. People understood what we were doing. They understood, I thought, in a more impactful way that the officers were there.
Excellent, thank you, yeah. It's a great program.
My next question, sorry, a lot to go through here. My next question was about the Melrose Library data. I noticed that we don't really have the summer months. We just have August, that's 1200. Are we expecting there to be more than that this year because of the Washington Park pool being down, and what does that look like for Melrose?
Good morning, Mayor and constituents. Yes, it's going to be much busier, much busier. In fact, we have had at least a 10% increase, especially the movie and dinner evenings. So it's not just the children, but it's the entire families, that they don't have to worry about a meal for that evening. So we will definitely, we definitely see an increase also with the Kiwanis Park. So, yes, definitely.
It'll be way higher, okay.
Be remiss if I didn't use this opportunity for a plug, because one of the things that this program, all these programs need, and goes back to one of my early comments, which was, we need the whole community. We've got a lot of partners here, and these are only some of the partners, but I know Lloyd and the Reset team are always still looking for folks to volunteer to be a part of the Reset team. Jeffrey is still obviously looking for opportunities with folks that can be mentors and help. The libraries have been very successful in getting local businesses to help underwrite some of the costs of food, so we certainly are looking for all of those opportunities as well. And the more of that we have, the more folks that we can serve in these different programs that we have.
Thank you. And the next question I had was about the apprenticeship program. It seems to be very successful. Is there any way for us to ramp that up so that we're having more kids into that program? I know that in education, it's moving more towards experiential learning, because if you want to get a job, you have to have some experience in it before you get there, so...
Probably our, really the piece that we really want to expand, and tell me if I say this wrong, Angela. So we're limited somewhat in how many we can have just with the capacity of the program, but they're actually doing a couple of those a year. The real limit that we have is actually placing, and Jeffrey may have mentioned this, is placing those youth after their city employment. So the way the program works is Angela and her team work with them over a period of weeks to get them ready for work, and they're getting paid to attend that training. Then they actually graduate out of that training into work for the city. What we would really like then to be able to do is have them graduate from the work in the city out into the community, and that's the piece we're probably most in need of. It's fine, and remember, these are youth as young as 14. So I mean, they're not necessarily the easiest youth to place into jobs, but we definitely, that's the part that probably we're looking more at how we expand that piece of it. We can probably take a few more kids into the program as we go, but that's probably maxed as, to make it worthwhile as much as we can. It's not a money issue as much as it is actually a capacity, just in people, but it really is being able to get them out of our program and into other employment would be critical.
Okay. My next question was about, well, I think we may have covered this with Vice Mayor Cobb, but with the tutoring, making sure that we're dealing with the learning loss that we've seen over COVID, I know that that's been a big discussion topic throughout our, well, my time here.
And certainly has been with the school. I know when the school board has presented to you, that's a key focus of theirs right now as well.
And I think the last comment I really have is, and I say this all the time because I'm a big data freak, metrics. We have a lot of stuff in here. We have a lot of different programs. We don't have demographic numbers, we don't have age numbers. Those things can help us take those numbers, analyze them, and see what's working the best and what's, you know, what we can fund best. And so I would love to see more coordination of those numbers.
And I think we do have those.
Yeah.
We've just not presented them today.
We can give you more data. It was just a balance between time and programming, and we can do more data matrix. Yes, we have a lot of that data. We do have more that we can provide. It's just a balance. That's what I was searching today, but if you get time through the manager, I'll be glad to sit down with you and walk you through those.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I know HR has some really good data on the number of children, like they put a report together, 50% of the kids go through the program, African-American males, 50% of them are females, and 50% of them have household incomes. We have all of that data. It's just that we didn't bring it today.
Yeah, one of the things I love is when you're able to make open data that, you know, and Doug can go look at it, and that helps him with his tutoring, or, you know, the libraries can look at it, just having that data open and available to other folks just makes it so much easier.
Yeah, and one of the things that Jeffrey and I have talked about too, is that there are within these programs, and this is true on, certainly on Lloyd's side of the house with Reset, and certainly with Chris and the outreach work they're doing, there are many, many anecdotal examples, actually real lives impacted by these programs. One of the challenges in sharing those is, these are all juveniles, and so we have to be very sensitive to their privacy with it as we work through. So the data actually is helpful, because the data can get actually both aggregated and we can break it down, and it removes kind of the individuals, but the real impact is coming in those individual stories. And some of you, we've been able to share individually kind of those as well, but there's a lot of those, it would be nice to share more of those, we're just not able to do that, because we're, again, working with juveniles in this case.
Yeah, we have plenty of those. I mean, in private, we can do it, each section, each department, each division, and each one of our partners, they can tell you about a specific success story. I guess one is, we had a youth that was shot. We utilized every program that we had, the youth were back in school, the youth were being tutored, the families are being moved, relocated to a new housing, the parents are working, we've run two children through the program, we're working with them now, we went to the hospital, we're working with the physicians. So it's a lot of that that we're doing. It's just, I know maybe it's just what servant leadership, we don't brag enough, maybe. You know, we just, that's just not my nature, and the team we have is very committed, they just want to go to work.
Yeah, that's fair. But our constituents want to know what's happening, so brag all you can.
All right, we'll get it. We'll get something together.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, Ms. Moon.
Oh, thank you. As it has been stated, this is definitely a comprehensive, and because of that, you know, I like to delve deep, and I have a few questions, if I could. Part of this, Bob, is for you. I'm looking at the Melrose Branch Library data, and I see the large increase primarily in the door count, which was 9,500, and I saw the increase in the programs. Thank you, Ms. Bean, for that. I go by there often. I like to visit with the Melrose, with the kids at the Melrose Library. One thing I'd like to know is, with regards to security, with that number, and she mentioned that during the summer, it's going to be more people. So my concern is with the children that's coming in there, and we don't call them at-risk kids, but because of that number and where they're coming from, and the environment that they're coming from, I have a concern with that, because, you know, is there any security? Is there any protection for the staff and for the kids that are entering and leaving if someone comes in there with a gun? Is there anyone there to protect?
Yeah, and I'll let Nathan answer a part of that, and I also will, again, this is another one of my plugs, that is, the more successful these programs are, the more youth that we have in these locations, and not just in the buildings, but also out in the playground and the others.
Right, yes.
The more necessary and important it is that we have adults, responsible adults present as well, and so being able to tap folks that are interested in volunteering to help with this is critical as well. We're not just relying on that piece, but that helps us as well, and then Nathan.
Yeah, I just want to know about the security, someone who's armed.
Yeah, well, I can't speak to armed security, but as far as unarmed security, we have doubled the number of security guards that we have for the libraries from one to two, and we have assigned that security to work consistent shifts at the Melrose Branch during times of peak use, so that we can try to identify those times when something may be happening and have someone there proactively, rather than just calling when something occurs.
Because I understand, in my conversations of being there, there has been several incidents, and they have been gone unheard, and there has been a lot of concern with regards to not having security there, and there has been a call for it, but nothing has been responded to.
Right, and so that's why we're, that's why we're adding on the position, that's why we're adding on those consistent shifts to try and address that safety concern.
Okay, but that's good to know.
Yes, ma'am.
And I also would say too, I know this, actually, I just saw an email from Jeffrey on this, that we also have asked our law enforcement folks to be a little more present on the outside as well, because we were aware, you know, that folks would come and potentially just stay out in the playground and never actually come into the building, and therefore the security that we have inside the building may not necessarily offer the same benefit as making certain that officers, when they're able to, are able to drive into that area and set eyes on what's going on and stuff as well.
I just want to make sure that we're protecting those.
Yeah, yeah, and the mentors are also on site as well and engaging with the youth as well. So those are the folks that we have, that we've contracted with to actually mentor with them as well. But again, the more of those and the more adults we can have, the better in those circumstances.
Yes, so hopefully we get more volunteers in that. And also, under your apprenticeship under HR, you have the 12 departments. Can you tell me which departments have the apprentices?
Yeah, and it changes, because, for example, we had one, two cohorts ago in the City Manager's Office, and we don't have one currently, because it depends on their interest and on the skills, but Angela, you know...
But overall, I guess I just want to know which departments.
They have, it varies, so I invited them to be here as well to kind of fill you in on that piece of the program. But back to your original question is, what we do is, it's just like when we were kids. If you knew somebody was adult and they were there, and that's why Bob and Clarence, and I hope the chief will allow me to continue to spend about eight hours a week over there, I know most of the kids, we could diffuse much, 99% of the issues. Ms. Bean knows them well. We can try to see it before it starts.
Yes, I was just concerned, because I had heard that there were some teenagers that had come in who were armed, and they had to be taken out, so I was just concerned about that.
Right, yes, ma'am.
Good morning, Mayor and Vice Mayor Cobb, and members, in his absence, and members of council. We do, we have a variety of city departments to include, parks and recreation, libraries, they tend to have the most volume of our young people. As indicated earlier, a lot of our young people, this is their first job.
Yes.
And so they're 14 years old, this is their first photo ID that they've had to be able to secure, and so we have a lot of first experiences for them. We also have individuals that have gone to the sheriff's office, our Department of Technology, as well as Fire EMS. They've actually had three different apprentices. Probably the more challenging areas has been Jeffrey's area and general services and public work, so we're very closely with the City Attorney's Office, just ensuring that we're adhering to the U.S. Department of Labor, to ensure that we don't have young people performing duties and jobs they should not do. So those are just a few of the departments, and I'll ask the team if there's some others. I feel like I'm leaving some others out. Circuit Court, yes, I couldn't forget that.
That's great.
Yep, Circuit Court, we actually had our first apprenticeship and/or intern that we've ever had in that area, and they took on a young person, Commissioner Revenu as well, and he's also been very supportive. In fact, just to give him a plug, on last week, he provided our refreshments and beverages for our young people, and that was out of the Commissioner Revenu's office, so we do take in-kind donations. As indicated earlier, when Ms. Bean was talking about the dinner, that's sort of a big thing when the young people are coming in after school, they're hungry. And so we've been trying to partner with businesses in the community to help offset some of our costs, so that we're not spending all our money on food. We really want to take that money and apply it to their wages instead, so we've developed some relationships with some of the businesses to be able to provide dinner for the young people.
And also, you mentioned with the apprenticeship earning $15 per hour for 15 to 20 hours, and you're looking for longer periods?
Yep, so now we're in the summertime, so we're able, you know, per the U.S. Department of Labor, you have to be very mindful of the hours young people are working while they're going to school, but since school is out, it allows us to provide them with additional hours that they can work in a department. And last summer, I'll share, we had one young man who did an exceptional job out at Hotel Roanoke in partnership with Brian Manns and Brian Wells, and that young man made over $3,500 that summer, last summer. So the summertime is a great time, as the City Manager indicated, we've been able to actually increase our numbers. We were averaging upwards of seven youth, but this particular cohort, we started off with 12, we now have 11 that are in that cohort, and so the intent this year is to have two cohorts, but have much larger volumes of young people that we hopefully can reach. But certainly, it's a capacity issue in terms of where they can be placed within the organization and just for my staff. So I do want to just give a shout out to my staff that's here. The folks that you see here, our HR manager, Jennifer White, who's done an exceptional job in expanding those partnerships with the teen apprenticeship program, our consultants, Rashawn and Mary, and we have our intern that's here. I'll plug in for her, we're excited to have her this summer, so she's actually got a glimpse of what the apprenticeship program looks like, but it takes a lot of effort with our staff, and certainly this is above and beyond the day-to-day work that they do, this is after-hours, weekends that they're working with the young people, so.
Ms. Moon, you still got the floor. I just want to comment on this same area. I have been involved with the apprenticeship program. I have truly been impressed with what they do, and I think you do a great job. You've got a good team there that I've had a chance to work with them, so thank you all for what you do. And again, Councilman Wilson, that apprenticeship program, I like that we've worked hard and long to get that, but that's doing some tremendous things. So thank you all for what you do, because in some of the graduates, I see smiles on their face, but you start talking how much money they're able to make and do, and then be referred to a job, that's good stuff.
Thank you, Mayor, for that, and certainly we appreciate your support of the program coming out to our graduation. The young people got an opportunity to meet Vice Mayor Cobb a couple of weeks ago, so that was quite a treat for them. But I can't emphasize enough, it is a big deal. The kids get really excited. You know, the mayor of City of Roanoke is coming to your graduation, and he's presenting the certificate, and we invite their families, and their families are bringing flowers for the young people, taking pictures. And this year, certainly, we're really excited to have the Honorable Judge, honestly, Weir, that's going to be our guest speaker at Burgland Center, so certainly if you're available, please, you're welcome to join us for that event.
Thank you. Ms. Moon, you still got the floor.
Oh, thank you. I don't think this one applies to you, Angela, but thank you. But I did want to comment, my first job was doing a summer program through TAP when I was 14, and I worked over at OIC, if any of you all remember OIC.
Yeah, hopefully somewhere in these interns are some future city employees as well.
Yes, yes, to start there. One of the other questions I have is with regards to the Reset Star City Safe, and you talk about the BoxFit program and all, but I also wanted to know, I know we are putting youth with them, but what about with the Melrose Athletic Club? Are we trying to work with them as well, since they have like 50 years of expertise in that, or are we just focusing on one side?
I don't know if we're going to be able to answer that question, because Lloyd is the one that runs the program at least, and he's out, so, but we can get the answer for you, but I don't know, I don't know what, he works with more than BoxFit, we just used that group, but I don't know the full spectrum.
Right, okay, because I was just thinking about this, the quadrants of the city, when you're looking at the northwest side, and you've got kids down in southeast that could also be put into a program. You've got the three contract counselors, who are they?
Those are, the three contract counselors would be Bart Edwards, Yvette Andrews, and Adrian Davis. And then you have the mentor pieces, which would be Thomas Roberts, Dungy, and Eddie...
Watkins, Eddie Watkins, okay.
All right, and then you have the consultants that we use that do the counseling and that do the professional counseling, such as, I think the one we use primarily is, I'll give you his name, I'll think of giving you, but we contract with them to do some more intensified one-on-one counseling.
Is one of them the encouragement group? Do you all work with the encouragement group?
No, I'm not familiar with that group.
Okay, that's part of, okay, it's part of Chris Roberts, okay. And, let's see here, the black, one of the flyers I see here is the Black to the Future Black in Technology. Who runs that one? Who offers that?
Mr. Pitcher.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's the Black in Technology Program, and he also does robotics. I mean, he's more like our Minister of Education.
All right, I like that.
He's our education person that helps us, because he also works in the school system, and he allows us access, that way we can have an intermediary to kind of work with the schools.
Well, I think it was the stroke of genius, that's great, it is stroke of genius. Under what's next, under your tactical and strategic plans, I'm glad to hear, Bob, that there's going to be some outreach and collaboration with bringing in the CEOs to the table to to the table, to, uh, to look at how they can also, uh, participate to keep from duplicating and, uh, spreading the, uh, city, uh, theme in their, in their resources.
We've had a lot of good support and a lot of good participation, and this is just a way to make sure it's as, as efficient and as resourceful as possible.
Yes, yes, that's a good one. And under the team judge, I know it's this challenging, but I'm glad you're giving thought to that, where you're looking at partnerships throughout, because, because again, it worked for me under TAP, and I know, uh, uh, that's where I met my best friend, uh, who's been with me, uh, for now, for fifty-some years, and, uh, let me see what else I have here. Um, let me go over here to your briefing that you gave, if I could, uh, where you speak about the, uh, commit, comment, I mean, the commitment to doing all you can. Uh, I like that piece with regards to the justice, uh, is, you know, is, uh, achieved for the victim of violence. I know under gun violence, that's one thing that the public does look at, they want to see that person brought to justice who has committed that crime, so I do, uh, like where we do partner with, uh, other, uh, law enforcement, uh, to, to, uh, be able to handle that. And also, um, where we are looking at the, uh, to prevent acts of violence with a, with a focus on keeping the youth engaged, uh, so that they are not into the risky behavior, uh, that, uh, so that they don't become a victim or perpetrator. So I see that in those programs that you all are offering, so I do give my, uh, give you all your props for that. And under the components of your models that you mentioned demonstrates the success, and I like successes, is the behavior, looking at the change, uh, with the street outreach and, and all of that, so I won't, uh, reiterate that, but also in changing community norms, the awareness with your campaign, uh, the community building activities, uh, which I think, uh, with conflict resolution. And I think that's where I was going with the, uh, with Fletcher Nichols, I believe, uh, is that part of where he's with the enc- uh, encouragement group, working with Chris Roberts for that?
Yeah, so Chris works with, um, and before him, Antonio Stovall, worked with a lot of the folks that had been referred to them that were part of their case management, which was those groups in order to work with them on conflict resolution. Those are with the individuals, and that's where their main focus is, and then if you step back, there are also efforts, um, by both them, as well as some of the programs that Jeffrey mentioned, which is more general conflict resolution, just again, so that anyone, a, a good example was, some of that was, um, done at the recent youth summit, um, so, or anyone that participated was able to participate in those activities, so yes.
Yeah, I think that's an important piece, is that conflict resolution.
Yeah, I think that the challenge going forward is trying to figure out how we reach that same level with those that are not youth.
Right, and I was going to say those that are up, not over eighteen.
Yeah, where we're seeing the conflict occurring now that's resulting in gun violence at the moment, tend to be folks that are not youth, um, they're older.
Right, and what the mayor has brought, uh, I had emphasis on, what do you do with those over twenty-one to thirty-three of, uh, trying to get them in and, and offer some resolution to how they handle their anger. And then looking at your models, uh, you have here, and I noticed that one of the models, the only one actually in Virginia, and I have to say is Danville.
Yeah.
And the other ones are so far out, have you reached out to Danville and talked with them?
Yeah, Danville, Danville was actually one of the first communities that we met with, actually, the chief and some of the officers went to Danville for a couple of days to actually visit. I know, um, Robert David, who leads their effort with, um, youth and gang kind of violence, um, prevention piece, um, was, uh, engaged with the, um, the Gun Violence Prevention Commission, I think before it was even a commission, back when it was a task force, and certainly, Chris Roberts has, has talked with them, um, as well. Their, their model, um, that they're using is kind of that predominant force deterrence, um, and then kind of a little bit of the cure violence, um, component. They, their program is referred to as Project Imagine, I think is the name of that program.
Yes, yes, yes.
But that's really that, that same model, that force deterrence model, where you're really trying to isolate those individuals that are either likely to become a victim or a perpetrator of violence, and then you work directly with them through case management. That is exactly what Chris Roberts' model is built on, um, as well with it. So yeah, absolutely, they've been, and they are definitely the best example in, um, in Virginia, um, they're actually recognized nationally with the efforts that they had, um, in place as well. Um, there are a few others that are starting to evolve, Lynchburg is starting to look at some of those as well, and we'll keep tabs on them as well, and try to learn from them as they go as well.
Yes, I was more, uh, uh, looking at what was, what was closer to us at home, and I just saw that, uh, cause Chicago, you know, we're not, uh, that form of government, so I did not, uh, see, well, what, you know, with the similar models would be, when I looked at what's in Virginia.
Yeah, the other communities, I mean, one of the things that was unique about Danville also is much of their violence was being perpetrated by gang activity.
Yes.
Um, and so, when you look at some of the other communities, um, that we've looked at, again, it may not be gang-related, it may just be other, other kind of disturbances or other disputes, and, and those, so we're also looking more at those now, um, because again, a lot of our recent activity hasn't been affiliated with gangs at all, so we're trying to also look at models that are out there, that go beyond kind of the youth and gang model.
Yes, and under your offender-focused policing, I know you, you mentioned that you've solved all of, uh, you know, the, the, uh-
With the exception of the most recent, so.
Right, and, and, uh, what I, I guess, I, uh, when we were at, uh, FedUp, there was still something mentioned there with regards to like in twenty-twenty-two, some of them are still unresolved.
Yeah, there, there are definitely ca, this is in twenty-three, so there are definitely cases, twenty-two, twenty-one, and twenty, that are not yet cleared, that have not been resolved. Um, one of the, probably the biggest challenge, um, that in our resolution with investigators, being able to solve them, is, is the lack of willingness for folks in the community to speak, speak up.
Do we keep that encounter like in the forefront? I know it is for the pa, for the families who go through it every day, but do we still mention it or have a way?
Yeah, the detectives still work.
Keep bringing it out, uh, to let the public still be aware that this has not yet been solved?
Yeah, and I'll let the chief talk about kind of how the detectives continue to work on those cases.
Yeah.
Absolutely, the detectives definitely, uh, make sure that they maintain, uh, a working case on all of the files, and I would say, uh, we've made progress in the way of ensuring that our citizens are helping to solve these cases. Uh, in addition to the great work that the detectives are doing, I think that the reason why we are able to clear all of the homicides except for the one that just occurred, is because of some of the community input, uh, because we've been keeping that on the forefront. We can only be successful with the help of our community, and I, I believe that we're beginning to see some of the pay.
And that's why I've mentioned that, the awareness to keep it out in the community, so that they know that their child is still, that family is still looking for us, you know, uh-
Absolutely.
Someone to be brought to justice who committed that crime.
Absolutely, uh, these cases, the arrest, and then the subsequent trial, uh, unfortunately, that takes time.
Yes.
We've just had a case, uh, last week, uh, from twenty-eighteen, a homicide that was sentenced in court, and so, you know, sometimes the resolution, the ultimate resolution, uh, literally in some cases, take years.
Yeah, yes, unfortunately.
Yeah, and we, I didn't mention this in the information, but it was actually just in the media as well, and we're a part of it also, is there are some, um, data tools that are out there too that help with those, some ballistics, um, work that is now available that allows you to match, um, weapons from different crime scenes as well, that may also assist in some of those, um, previous cases that have yet been, um, cleared as well.
Yeah, and also, I wanted to compliment, I saw where you have reducing gang activity violence and recidivism, uh, where you're working with the sheriff's department, I want to comment and compliment, uh, the sheriff on all he's doing, that's great.
It's a really good program that he has started, um, where, you know, and he, he stood here and mentioned to you all that, you know, every single person that is in his facility is, at some point in the not-too-distant future, going back out into our community and preparing them to be successful and to not perpetuate, um, violence is, is key, and that's an important part of the program he has underway.
Yeah, and your operation neighborhood pinpoint, uh, could you tell me a little bit more about that?
Sure, so that is, I mean, this is another one that Chris Roberts is involved in, and it relates to those, uh, that data assessment that the police department is doing, where they're looking at, and it's usually down to as, as short as a block, it's not necessarily a neighborhood, it's a very short, limited area, and so they're identifying those areas where there have been repeated instances of violence, and so, and it runs the full gamut, so it starts with a reset visit, where everybody is actually visited by reset, then as we shift into the pinpoint piece, it, it can be, um, there may be code enforcement, um, issues in the area that need attention, maybe it's a house across the street that's causing problems, um, because it's not been kept up, could be lighting, um, in the area as well, and, and it's also brings back to that changing the narrative piece, it's also helping that block move beyond just being known as a place where the last two shootings or three shootings occurred, and having activities there as well that try to generate some different kind of outcomes and stuff, so, so that's what that one is really focused on. I think we're going to be able to do more now that we have our, um, community engagement teams back up and running, that we'll be able to get, um, more, um, more direct and not just relying on Chris and some of the partners that they've been able to bring into that mix.
That's good, that's good. And, uh, I see, and under your building trust relationships with area youth, I think we talked about this, and I think that's under your stroke of genius, where you have the ca, is that the counseling services and the tutoring and the mentoring?
Yeah, the tutoring are what's mentioned, counseling are those three individuals that Jeffrey had mentioned, as well as the professionals.
Right, okay.
But we also sign it to, the little case, the whole wraparound services, assessments, that, that's what we talk about.
Oh, okay, and under your potential enhancement opportunities, where you've enhanced your focus on northwest, I was over in southeast this weekend, and I was talking with a couple of the neighborhood associations there, and they are wanting to, wondering when will some, uh, more focus, enhanced focus come back their way because of crime, you know, the increased crime there as well.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's going to be something that I think is important as we go through any of these enhanced services, and this is where you, the council, can assist us, is, so when we talk about enhanced services, we're talking about services above and beyond the normal services, so it's not about taking services out of one part of the city to move them to another part of the city, and it's important that folks understand that. So, the SROs are a great example, that, that's taking folks that aren't currently assigned to any of our neighborhoods, pulling them out of those responsibilities in, for the summer, and then adding them into an area that we can focus on, so it's going to be important that we do that. And, and again, as I mentioned, we do think that there are, um, some opportunities in the southeast, particularly around substance use, that we need to start looking at in a different way than we've been, been looking at before.
And I think that's what they were referring to, was the, uh, substance abuse. And, uh, last is under your performance measures and your indicators, uh, with regards to the number of youth programs and the number of participants, uh, how do you measure that?
Yeah, so those, it goes back to actually what Mr. Volson was saying, so they are measured, so I use the apprenticeship-
Right, I mean, other than what, okay.
Yeah, as an example, and use that so that we know how many youth come in, but we also know, um, you know, their, their race, their gender, we know kind of their family status, whether they were referred.
We have a detailed one if you want to share briefly.
We, yeah, well, we can come back and do that, yeah.
Yeah, cause I was just-
We have, Fox has their-
Yeah, cause that's what I was looking for, was, uh, was when you look at the number of youth, I guess I was looking at the demographic, just like what Peter was saying, was how do you track it?
And part of that-
Make sure you don't have repeats of people, the same people coming in, or you have an increase, where are they coming from?
Yeah, and part of that too goes back to the mayor's question too, cause using that data also helps us understand, to Jeffrey's point earlier, are we getting folks from the areas that we're actually trying to get them from?
Yes, that's what I mean, that target area, yes, how you measure.
Yes, yeah, and so all of that, and, and we can certainly provide you, we'll provide you the examples of some of those.
Yeah, I'd be interested in that as well, yes, thank you, that's all I have, Mayor, appreciate it.
Sure, thank you.
This is a response, and I apologize, I do this, but didn't share, um, with regards to policemen and departments, we also have the Burgland Center Stormwater, but this year, we have the city clerk's office partnering with the mayor's office, so we're actually going to have an apprentice in your area, so you'll see that person, um, this summer.
That's good, we used to do that, yes, I meant to bring that up, that, uh, when I was clerk, we did that a few times with some youth, thank you for that.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you, yes.
All right, Ms. Sanchez-Jones.
Thank you.
For the second time.
I'll be brief. Well, uh, Mr. Cal, what is the security, uh, that is currently, uh, that Grandin Core Library has? What is the security?
Raleigh Court Library.
Yeah, Raleigh Court.
So, the, and I can have Nathan talk in more detail, and I was going to actually mention this, cause I know when it came up with concerns regarding Melrose, all of our libraries are very busy, thankfully, um, and, and often cases, very busy with, with youth, um, and all of them bring their own challenges. Um, Raleigh Court has completely different security challenges than does Melrose, than does Belmont, um, and, and each of those, so that's the reason why the libraries are increasing the, uh, the security personnel that they have, but security is, other than when they assign them for like the extended hours at Melrose, security is on a rotating basis, so we don't have security personnel stationed at, you know, each of our branch libraries and stuff with it, so, yeah.
Cause I really like the program that the Raleigh Court Library has, but the issue is after school, the problems that they start at school, they finish them at the library, and, because there's no consequences. So that's an issue that we need to look into, you know, whether we could provide an officer, uh, during those after-school hours, or the cons, or not have the kids come back to the library, one or the other.
Yeah, 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 that has been, that Raleigh Court has had, um, we certainly have had some challenges there.
Yes, um, and my other question was for Mr. Pitzer.
Good morning.
Yes, how do you plan to outreach, uh, to do outreach for those students that are currently taking classes on ed-menton?
Um, that's an excellent question. Currently, all the students that, um, I'm working with are referred through Lloyd Merchant, so they would, uh, be referred through him.
Okay.
Okay, um, he works with the schools, and he'll have the connection to who's on that program and et cetera.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And again, that really, that referral is because we know that students across the entire school have suffered learning loss, and the school is addressing those in a variety of different ways. The referrals are really for those students that are at the greatest risk for the areas that we're working within, and that's why they're actually extracted from that, that effort and stuff as well.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Last, last piece I have, no more presentation, I just want, I, I, I wouldn't, and, um, Ms. Moon Reynolds had mentioned it, the performance men, I don't want to leave anyone, uh, with